Good evening and welcome to the May 10th, 2012 meeting of the Northampton School Committee. I am Mayor David Narkowitz and we begin each meeting with the roll call. So I'll ask the caller to call the roll. Sorry, I was in city council mode there for a minute.
Mayor David Narkowitz.
Present.
Mr. Alden Born.
Here.
Lou DeVal.
Present.
Mr. Michael Flynn. Mr. Downey Meyer. Ms. Lisa Minnick.
Assistant Regret.
Mr. Howard Moore.
Here.
And Stephanie Pick.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Shelfow.
Here.
Mr. Ed Zahous.
Present.
Your Honoree, you have a call.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the public comment period. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? So I have a list, so if you just would come up to the podium and if you could just state your name and address for the record. And I believe Madam James is the first speaker.
Good evening. My name is Andrea James and I live at 13 Birch Lane in Florence. I am also a French teacher, department chairperson, and team leader here at JFK Middle School. Minus five years of my career, I've been teaching here in Northampton since 1980. I'd like to thank all of you and especially the superintendent and the mayor for the efforts that you're putting into restructuring and examining how money is spent in our city. I know you're working hard on that and that effort does not go unnoticed in my household. You've received, most of you, my letter about the sixth grade world language program and how I believe that it is an absolute gem of a program. I've heard back from some of you and one of you in the hallway just now, and I know that you don't want to make that cut, and as of course I don't either. One thing I didn't say in my letter that I thought would be important for you to reflect upon, in case you hadn't already thought about it, was the impact that cutting sixth grade world language will have on the rest of our world language program. It clearly would impact here in seventh and eighth grade. It's a six-week program, but we get so much accomplished that I think it could put our other courses behind by perhaps even eight weeks, which is two months. This would trickle up, so to speak, to the high school and I think would be detrimental to our learners who struggle, as well as to our learners who really excel. I fear, I anticipate, that it would impact our higher-end honors and AP courses as well, all of which add to the rich fiber of our Northampton High School offerings. I've said before to school committee members, other years, that I think the sixth grade world language program is a very, very valuable one. It cost the city around $50,000 for it, but in my estimation, it's worth about twice as much. We really get a great bang for our $50,000. I respectfully ask you to reconsider the cutting of this program and thank you ahead of time for making all efforts to do so. Thank you.
The next speaker is Susan Voss.
Hi, my name is Susan Voss and I live at 89 Ridgewood Terrace in Northampton. I'm a professor of engineering at Smith College and I have a daughter, Erin, who is in eighth grade here at JFK. I sent each of you a letter about three weeks ago and I'm here to speak about two major concerns I have with the proposed math changes at the JFK school. First, I'm concerned about the elimination of the advanced math program currently in place for seventh and eighth grade students. This program has truly been the academic highlight of my daughter's experience at JFK. While I absolutely support the effort to increase math content for all students, the proposed changes will actually decrease the math content for 20 percent of the students at JFK, and I have yet to hear a sound argument for eliminating advanced math. I ask you to please carefully read my letter for more details on the existing arguments. In the end, Northampton should be a leader in providing challenging math curriculum to all of its students and should not be lowering the expectations for those who are ready for more challenging work. I don't see any reason that the proposed changes can't be made while retaining the current advanced math program. My second concern relates to the process. Only very recently, parents have heard that teachers and administrators have worked for three years to develop this new math pathway. No parents or students, to my knowledge, have been involved in these discussions, and the attitude has been one of refusing to engage in an open discussion and instead only allowing for a description of what the plan is. Last Thursday night, more than 40 people attended an open forum to learn about the math curriculum changes, and I believe this is the one and only public comment period. It was clear that these changes were moving ahead and the attitude was to squelch any concerns brought forward instead of allowing for an actual discussion. In closing, both of my concerns are supported by the mission of the Northampton Public Schools, which I'll read. "The mission of the Northampton Public Schools, in partnership with parents, guardians, and the Northampton community, is to promote and support high achievement by each student. This mission includes both parental involvement and challenging all students, both of which are lacking in the current math proposal. I hope that you, our elected members of the school committee, will ask the teachers to reconsider the opportunities they will provide for our stronger math students. The answers I heard last Thursday night were absolutely inadequate for at least 20 percent of our students." Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Erin Voss.
My name is Erin Voss and I live at 89 Ridgewood Terrace in Northampton. I am an eighth grader at JFK and advanced math is my favorite class. It's the only class that I have that challenges me. Before the math curriculum is changed, I think you should talk to kids in all math classes at JFK about their experiences. I know my friends and I think that it is important to keep advanced math.
Thank you. The next speaker is Pearl Silverman.
Hi, my name is Pearl Silverman and I live at 28 Aldridge Street, Northampton. I am in eighth grade and I just, I'm almost done with the middle school math curriculum. And I went to the open speaking forum during, on Thursday night, and I asked a question at the end and I didn't get a straight answer. Well, and I don't think many other people did either, and so that's why I'm here. And I remember in sixth grade when everything wasn't leveled, I had a hard time, like, being able to raise my hand and being confident in class because everyone was at different levels. And in seventh and eighth grade, I was so much more confident in raising my hand and everyone was at my same level and could work with me, and I just felt so much more confident and ready to, like, take on the work. And I personally don't think that the new middle school math curriculum that is going to happen is a good plan, and I'm going to, like, keep working on talking to everyone because all the people I've talked to so far don't think it's a good idea, and I think that it's not good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public comment? Okay, thank you very much. The next item is announcements. Are there any announcements? Ms. DeVal.
The Ryan Rhodes School PTO is raising money and they're having a starry night auction, which is tomorrow night, Friday, May 11. It's to be held at the Luke Park Garden House. There'll be a lot of items auctioned off, but it'll also be a raffle, and in the raffle, each class has made a class project, whether it be bookcases or replicas of Van Gogh or something like that, but they're going to be raffled off. It should be a lot of fun. It'll help raise money for Ryan Rhodes PTO, and I hope to see people there. I'll be there. Thanks.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, my announcement is that this Saturday, the 12th, there's the NEF plant sale at Smith Folk from 9:00 to 1:00.
Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move into the next item, which is recommended actions, and we have a consent agenda tonight that consists of several sets of minutes. The school committee meeting, meeting minutes of April 12th, 2012, the curriculum committee meeting of April 3rd, 2012, the superintendent evaluation committee meetings of March 29th, 2012, and April 11th, 2012, and the joint school committee city council meeting minutes for April 26th, 2012. There's also a contract with, actually a change of language amendment to the previously approved Clark School contract, and there are no field trip requests. Before we start, is there a motion to?
We always separate out the purpose, because we didn't get the language change.
Okay. Okay, so what we will do then is, so I guess, would you like to just move to remove that from the consent agenda?
Can we ask Ms. McLaughlin, the Clark School lease language change agreement, do we have copies of that?
I have, I have copies to be signed tonight. I can read the changes in the language if you wish.
But they didn't get that in advance?
They did not get that in advance.
Okay, so you better pull it out, yeah.
Yeah, I think, okay, so all those in favor of removing that item from the consent agenda and moving it out into the rest, regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so then we're back to the remainder of the consent.
Remove the remainder of the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, so there's a motion made and seconded on the consent agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All, I guess there shouldn't be. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Great. The next item are reports and recommendations, and the first is a report from Daniel Dietz, our NHS student representative.
Thank you. It's a busy time at the high school with AP tests going on this week. Also, MCAS is taking place next week. However, with this busy schedule, we have good news. The visit from NEAS went well, and they seem to enjoy visiting our high school. Also, it's a great time to be a senior with fun events commemorating our high school experience coming up. We had a great award ceremony on Tuesday night. Also, the Key Club is having a Making Pillowcase event, which is going to be for kids in foster care and for also kids who are ill. If you know how to sell, you're welcome to come at the high school Monday night at 7:00.
Thank you. The next item is a presentation, and I wanted to recognize Principal Nancy Athas for a presentation of the 2012 Teachers of the Year.
Sue Biggs is supposed to come, but I think that she had a game practice, so she may see her come in very shortly. Sue Crago is with me. I'm very pleased to announce to the school committee that, as you know, we're part of the MIMZI grant, the Math and Science Initiative, and this year, two of our teachers were chosen as MIMZI Teachers of the Year. And what that means, on the weekend of May 23rd and 24th, they were, they will be honored in Washington DC, and they will also receive a monetary amount for, for their teaching supplies or what they want to do in the classroom. It's really a huge honor. There's only 23 teachers who are part of the MIMZI grant that have been awarded this honor this year. So I know that on their agenda, part of it is going into the Congress, so maybe they can see the president or meet some of our congressmen. If I could, I would like to read a recommendation that I wrote for Sue Crago for this award, and then one that Amy Johnson, who was the MIMZI Teacher of the Year last year, wrote for Sue Biggs. Okay? "As the principal of Northampton High School, I've had the opportunity and pleasure to work with Sue Crago for the past four years. She is articulate and knowledgeable, and in my opinion, exemplary teacher. She is professional and is always seeking ways to do things better or more efficiently. When visiting her classroom, I'm always awed by her presentations and the depth and breadth of her knowledge of English. Sue has been in the educational field for 28 years and is certified in English. She has taught a wide range of students from advanced placement to students at risk in alternative settings. Because of these varied opportunities, she has developed a wide range of techniques which help students in her advanced placement classes. Currently, she is an advanced placement English and Humanities teacher at Northampton High School, responsible for over 100 students during the course of one school year. Last year, 80 percent of these students had qualifying scores on their advanced placement tests. She is acutely aware that students have different needs and learning styles. Sue is legally blind and always pushes her students to do their very best. Her motto is, 'If I can do it, you can do it.' We might need a little help or do it in a different way, but it certainly does not stop us from achieving our very best. Classroom walkthroughs, observations are always varied. One could see students participating in Socratic seminars or discussing a pertinent topic. She always gives students choices for prompts and topics, as one can always measure the same skills by using different ways to measure mastery. She is a teacher of excellence, and I recommend her without reservation." Sue Crago. And then Sue Biggs from Amy Johnson, and I just, it's kind of anecdotal, but I was telling Sue on the way in here that they both have 28 years of teaching experience. I don't know if that means anything, but I thought it was kind of curious that the two of them had it. "I am writing to highly recommend Sue Biggs for the MIMZI Teacher of the Year. As a past winner myself, I cannot think of someone more deserving of this award. Sue has a love of her subject and the respect for her students that are hallmarks of excellent teachers. She is not only extremely competent in her subject area, but she is also enthusiastic about deepening her knowledge in chemistry, as well as in related fields. She and I often discuss ways to improve our teaching by collaborating and crossing over between physics and chemistry. And I can add in here that she asks me every year if she can have the same period as a prep period that Leslie Pruitt-Homme has for AP Bio, so she can learn about biology during her prep period. She continually analyzes her own practice in order to have her classes be the best that she can, they can be. She never stops learning and progressing. Although she has been teaching for 28 years, she has the enthusiasm of a first-year teacher with a knowledge and experience that comes with 28 years in the classroom. She has an easygoing manner, her organization of topics, and her desire to have her students succeed make her a favorite among students at Northampton High School. Her classes are always very successful, both honors and AP, and her students always feel challenged yet supported. She has a talent for teaching that is so much more than practice and tenure. And when she's not in the lab, she can be found on the lacrosse field or the soccer field, and we're very proud of her as well."
Nancy, first of all, this is incredible. Congratulations to you, Sue. I'm glad that you're here tonight. It's nice to see you and to be able to acknowledge the great work that you do in the classroom every single day. I just want to mention that this is really exceptional, that we have two Teachers of the Year from the same school, and you two very much deserve the acknowledgement and the reward that you're getting, so thank you for what you do. Nancy, I was wondering if, as long as we're on the topic of the MIMZI grant, the school committee has received a copy of the letter tonight that we've sent home to parents, and I just wondered if you could speak to it for just a moment, just a brief explanation about how this funding exchange occurred, and just give them a little more insight.
Well, as part of, as part of the MIMZI grant, they give a reimbursement to the school every year based on the number of AP exams that are given. This year, we're giving 789 exams. Students in our school not only take the exams that they're enrolled in, in their courses, but for example, if you're in physics, B or C, you can take the physics, I think it's E and M exam, and you don't have to have been part of that course. So that's the reason why we have so many kids taking AP exams. The other piece to it is, is that when MIMZI first came in four years ago, what the advanced placement coordinator did, MIMZI gave money back only for English, math, and science exams, so we were able to reduce the fees of the foreign language exams that we had and also for the history exams, and this year, because of a federal...
Hold one second. So because of the grant that MIMZI gave to the school, you were able to reduce the fees that students paid for the test for the past couple of years?
For the past four.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And so with that said, they passed a new federal law that the students would in fact have to be reimbursed and not the school, so we...
So we had already reduced the price of the exams based on the fact that we were going to get the reimbursement for the school, so the students paid a reduced price, and yet instead of getting a reimbursement for the school, the change in the federal law led them to give the reimbursement back to the student who had already had the discount, correct? Okay.
Okay, and so there's hidden costs within the exam as well, with proctoring and free and reduced lunch, et cetera, so with that, there would be quite a deficit in the testing account, so we are asking that the students sign over the checks.
Right, so because they already had a reduction in their fees, they're getting the check back that used to go to the school, so this letter is to parents and to kids to explain the change and to ask them to give that reimbursement back to the school because we reduced their fees already.
Correct, and I think it's important to note as well that students that are taking the environmental science or the extra physics exam, that has already been paid for by the school because we get reimbursed through MIMZI, so the full cost of that exam needs to be reimbursed back to the school because...
Yeah, so in that case, it wasn't just a reduction, it was a free exam. Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to say, as a parent of a child who's taking AP classes, I've received this letter, and although it's certainly well-written, I'm afraid that a lot of parents aren't going to read all the way through and recommend this to their kids to take care of this. I'm wondering if before the AP exams, if the kids will be prompted about this as well, or that could be done? Because I just hope that the work can get out more than just through this letter, because how much money we're talking about that might not get reimbursed if we don't receive these checks back.
It's in the thousands.
Yeah.
We've had some parent phone calls and we've responded to them. We are going to talk to the students, but they're right in the heart of it now for the next probably week and a half, so as soon as they're done and they're back in class, before the seniors leave, we will talk to the seniors.
Do you know when the checks are actually going out?
The checks, I have the checks, and until we send that letter out, it's incumbent upon the school to do that.
So you have them addressed to the kids?
Yeah. Right.
So you have the opportunity in some way, when you give those out to the kids, to ask, to explain to them what's going on and to have them sign on my own?
Right.
I was concerned that they were going to arrive at home and I've never seen that.
That's a good question, though. Important, yeah. Meanwhile, Sue Biggs walked in, and we said a bunch of nice things about you a few minutes ago.
You missed it.
So, but you're here, so we can honor you with a round of applause, because we're very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Neesk.
Okay.
You're next.
So we're moving on to the next, which is the Neesk Visit Report from you, or Comments.
Well, I think that Dan did a nice job in talking about it, and he's absolutely correct in terms of our school. Our school was really a hub of activity for four days, but I really think it's the planning process that is an incredible process, and I think that my, my two staff members would agree. We actually were doing this self-study for two years. Thank you for our late starts, I have to tell you, because they, if without those, we really would have had a problem. When the NEAS committee, two weeks before, there's a lot of planning that goes on, there's schedules, and it all has to kind of fit in together. I guess I compared it to planning a wedding, seeing that I've done three, but it was quite as much fun at the wedding and when it all came through, but they were very, very impressed. When they leave, they bring everybody into the auditorium and they talk to us, and they were very impressed by the instruction that they saw going on in the classrooms. They said it was commendable. They loved our facility, Northampton High School, which is a beautiful facility. They talked about the turnout, they were very impressed by the people that turned out, both for the panel discussion, for our afternoon events, and finally for the reception, and there is going to be some issues that we have, I won't say issues, but places that we need some work, and it will be in the core value area, rolling out the school-wide rubrics, it was all new to us, and so we will work on that. They saw a definite need for teacher collaboration, they felt that in the long block, they heard over and over again, there isn't enough time in the course of this whole day. For example, a teacher said she would love to be able to team up with a history teacher and do a lesson together, so working in the professional learning communities next year, as we plan to as an administrative team, that may, you know, help our need to collaborate together, and I have some things planned for faculty meetings. They talked about the need for more common assessments, and the last thing they talked about was vision, district, and school-wide. They didn't feel that we had long-range planning in place in some areas, and I think that we won't be surprised when we read the report, which probably won't be back for a few months for the initial look, and then in six months, you'll get the official report, but I don't think you'll be surprised, I think you'll be pleased in many of the areas, because it was an all-out effort by the whole school district, and I can't thank everybody in my, my staff, my students, administration, to you for helping, and the technology went off without a hitch, thank you, Bill, and then all who contributed to our own hotel in Northampton that made their visit a flawless event, which is really critical in the planning process. So all in all, I think that it went over very, very, very well. Questions?
Well, thank you and congratulations to you for leading that process. Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is the Business Manager's Report.
Hard to report, there was a number of attachments, but I'd like to go through the narrative portion of it first. Couple noteworthy items.
I'm sorry, you must not have the SPED report that's...
It's before me, yes. I apologize, I must have not had the one that you sent out yesterday, so, okay, so I guess I need to ask for the SPED report then.
It's not on mine either.
It's not on his either, so I don't feel so...
But I remember putting it on.
Okay.
You have it? Thank goodness.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Great.
I appreciate your time this evening. I had the opportunity to present a similar report a few weeks ago to the administrative team, and we just thought it would be very helpful if I had the opportunity to share some of the similar numbers with you. I just wanted to give an update on some of our larger accounts. At this point in the year, the tutoring account, these are in no specific order, but our tutoring account, which was initially funded at $50,000, we have approximately $12,330 left based on the encumbered...
Can you come up a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
Based on the encumbered numbers, we are looking at about $12,000 for the rest of the year to finish out our tutoring, so it's anticipated we will be in the black. These are funds that go to home hospitalizations. If students have accidents or are hospitalized, let's say at Providence or the Brattleboro Retreat, these funds provide the ongoing academic instruction. Our Special Education Therapy account, which is funded at $150,000, we are projected to be in the red by about $155,000. These funds are used for assistive therapy, such as assistive technology, OTPT, vision, we contract significantly with HECC, services through the Clark, Terry Dooley-Smith &amp; Associates, CTA, Community Therapy Associates, Futures, provides services for Perkins School for the Blind is one of our largest contracts at $82,000, and again, these are therapies that are provided to students. We have been looking at these, looking for areas that we could have some efficiencies, for instance, the Perkins contracts for the visions, vision therapy, and also contracts for vision therapy with the collaborative. We've been considering, and we posted for a position for a vision therapist, but we haven't found, we haven't had the application for somebody who has the qualifications at this time, and we're continuing to look, similar to many other surrounding districts. And I have been in contact with those districts also to see if we might be able to share a position if somebody is identified that would be appropriate and is looking for full-time. We're also looking at other areas such as the assistive technology and keeping track of the numbers, and again, it's an area where although we're beginning to approach the realm of advertising or considering hiring, hiring out and having our own person on staff, even though the sums are in the tens of thousands, it's still more cost-effective at this time to contract with the collaborative. Another main account is our called mainstream. We are looking at a projection of $83,000 in the red. This again is services that are contracted for, through Career Works, Community Enterprises, mainstream services through the Clark, James Levine &amp; Associates. Most of these services involve transition services for students who are going from 18... 18 to 22. It includes the ICE program, the Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment Program at Holyoke Community College. As I said, the mainstream services through the Clark. And James Levine &amp; Associates provides the districts with a lot of, provides the district with a lot of autism spectrum disorder consultation, in addition to professional development with positive behavioral interventions and support. Our evaluations at this time, we are $47,719, yeah, $45,719 in the red. Again, I want to emphasize, these numbers will change. They could go up, they could go down. It's based on the encumbered evaluations that we have contracted for, but these evaluations don't always take place. These evaluations include IEEs, which are independent educational evaluations that parents have requested, bilingual evaluations, both speech and psychological, vision evaluations, and assistive technology evaluations. I have noted here, an assistive technology evaluation runs from $1,300 to $1,500. So just a general idea of if we're doing simply 10 of these evaluations, we're talking upwards to $15,000 a year. And that's again, one of the areas why I'm keeping a very close watch on, at what point is it more cost-effective to hire our own staff versus continue to contract out? And clinical evaluations is another area we're looking at. The added district, or the 9,000 account, was funded at approximately $2.8 million. We're not expected to exceed it this year. We're hoping to come in under, just under, again, based on what we currently have encumbered. Again, this is a number that can change based on LEA assignments or other students coming back in the district or adversely going out of the district.
So Nathan, if I could just interrupt you for a moment here. For us, it's hard to follow all of these numbers without something in front of us, but what you just mentioned is very important, so I would ask you to pause and mention it again.
Okay. The $2.8 million, which is the most, the largest account that we have, the added district account, at this time, the projection based on what we have encumbered, what we are expecting to spend should be on target. We do not expect to be in the red on any added districts, but that number changes again based on students who may come back in the district before the end of the school year or if we were in a position of sending a student out of the district before the end of the school year. This year, we appear to be on target, not to exceed that. A projection, again, for next year is very hard to put in place, but I do feel that with the supports that we've put in place, with the investment in our in-district programs, with the number of students we've sent out versus the number of students who are graduating, I think we're beginning to turn the corner and we should hopefully begin to reduce this number as of next year. I would not feel confident saying by how much or until, to be honest with you, until probably October or November, at that point, we would then be able to say, this is where we ended 2012, these were the students, the total number that were coming in or coming out. It is, that would be again, based on assumptions. We are looking at transitioning a number of students back into the district over the summer. But we've also had other requests or hearings requesting added district placements. So it is again, one of those numbers that fluctuates. This year, we were very fortunate not to have too many LEA assignments where another district is saying that a student moved in or a student moves in prior to the April 1st and therefore we're looking at being fiscally responsible for the following school year. So we've been very fortunate with that number, and I think that will also assist us.
But that number, the $2.8 million that we allocate for added district placements, sorry, that's sort of a standard allocation from year to year? That's about 10% of our total budget if we're looking at a $28 million budget?
I frequently say that it's one in 10...
Those are the numbers I wanted to make sure we highlighted for the school committee to understand.
Yes. It's one in $10 allocated to the district. And this year, again, we funded the count at $2.8 million. The year before, it was $2.8 million. I believe the year before that, it may have been more around $2.6 and the year before that, $2.3. I don't have the actual numbers.
Okay, but that's the trend, okay.
But I've been working over the last two years to see that trend reverse itself. Area districts have been able to reduce their added district spending by increasing supports for programs within the district, which again, really is in the name of inclusion, providing for all students within the district.
Right, and you've been working very hard, very admirably on turning that around, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to highlight that point.
Yes.
Thanks.
And similarly, something that we frequently bring up with the administrative team, with $2.8 million, if we could reduce that number simply by a third, that would be an additional $1 million coming into the district every year. And of course, some of that would have to continue to go to the investment within those programs, but it would be a significant reversal.
Right.
Beyond that, just some of the highlights, as I've said before, some of the reasons why I feel that we are headed in the right directions for reversing this. We have continued to offer PD specifically around LD. We now have over 12 teachers who are certified Orton-Gillingham trainers, excuse me, 12 teachers who are certified Orton-Gillingham tutors, not trainers. And we've provided training in the Lynda Mood Bell methodologies. The only other area that I account that we sometimes exceed is our special ed legal, and this is something that's frequently brought up. And unfortunately, which is keeping Mr. McLaughlin up at night, it's hard to actually have a number. They have a tendency to be a little late in their billing. And we have had two hearings so far this year. We recently were in federal district court for an appeal of a favorable decision for the district. And we also had a favorable decision, I believe it was in January, may have been February. So we did go through two hearings this year. And again, we haven't finished the year at this time, so we are continuing to receive consultation. But it's another account that sometimes we'll exceed by a little bit. We weren't too far off base as of February, but again, I don't have the bills for March and April at this point, so.
What is the total number? We're coming in even with what was budgeted. What was budgeted?
Budget for...
For that legal?
Legal services.
See, I believe we're budgeted this year at $60,000. And I'm not saying we're going to come in at $60,000. We may exceed that. Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, you said something about graduating students. Were you trying, we were talking about kids who are now aging out of North Hampton Public School Services and as kids come in, we're going to try to keep more of our kids in district rather than sending them out. So is that what you were trying to say?
It is. And it's also one of the balances where we have to look at if, where we're allocating our resources for program development. If I was to look, let's say, at the high school around learning disability students, we really don't have anybody at this time that we could bring back in for next year or we have two seniors. And the idea of trying to create or intensify a program, we're not going to try to bring two seniors back in. It's their senior year. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be supported. It's not in their best interest when they've been out for an extended period of time. So we are looking to continue to provide assistance specifically around the social, emotional, behavioral components. This again is probably equalling upwards to 2/3 of the number of students that we have out of district. So we've been looking at increasing the licensed social workers, specifically at the elementary level and at the high school level. Last year, we reinvigorated the alternative learning program at the high school, and we've managed to provide the appropriate services for many number of students and hold on to students in that program, even though we've gone through the mediation process with the state facilitator. The parents agreed at that time that it was an appropriate program. So when we have the appropriate resources, you aren't sitting around a table and coming to the position of saying, well, I guess we really can't do that, or even having parents saying, I'm adamant the student has to go out of the district. This is the only place where they will, you know, receive benefit.
So as kids are getting older, you start looking at kind of a cluster of needs that maybe that we can identify so that we can meet those needs?
I'm not sure what you mean by as kids get older. I'm looking at a whole, you know, an overview of everywhere and where's the most effective way of addressing those resources. And in the past, we had a significant number of students who were out of district because of learning disabilities. And over the last three years, we have increased our program by a .6 teacher. And again, it's, some of it goes back to not even addressing a program, but addressing through RTI all students. It's not just special ed. And by addressing students who may struggle earlier on, providing that instruction, we've been able to reduce the referrals for special education. I wish I could really say reduce the referrals. I don't have hard numbers on that, but we are seeing fewer students who are requiring that level of assistance specifically around reading.
Well done.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Ziegler? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we will go with the business report. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Couple noteworthy items as part of the Business Manager's Report. The FY13 budget, as you know, was presented to the city council on April 19th, and it was presented with the three options that we initially had discussed so they could see how we were thinking and how we were developing our budget process. We also had a joint meeting with the city council, and I think there was excellent exchange of ideas and sharing of information. I think everybody walked away from the table with a good feeling. Renovations at Clark School will begin on June 25th. I will address the amendments to the Clark School contract at the end of the entire business report. In your packet, you have the financial statements. I've gone over most of the lines and have explained most of the lines to you in the last three or four meetings, but we are still looking at each of the lines. We are drilling down, analyzing them. We are finding, just like anything else, when you handle, you know, $15,000 invoices and you're handling $23 million, there are some things that get charged to the wrong accounts and some things that need to be reallocated. So as we continue to drill down, we find some minor things like this and correct them. So it helps us when we file our end-of-the-year report with the Department of Ed. The budget, the superintendent did present the budget on the 19th. Again, the school committee and the city council had the joint meeting on the 26th. Just kind of skipping...
Well, I think to be clear, we presented talking points to the budget. We didn't present the budget. We'll be presenting the budget in the June meeting.
Thank you. That is correct. Talking points. Let me skip down into food service. We're still investigating the software module, which will notify parents and tracking of the student balances so they can make payments and see what their child is eating, eliminate the need for printing late payment notifications. So we're still moving forward with that. The food service department will be presenting to the Budget and Property Committee in the first meeting in June, so that's coming up, and you will get results of that after that presentation. Transportation, we're still looking at all the associated costs with a late school opening. We're putting lots of hours into the research and information gathering process to this. There's a lot that goes into it, a lot of behind-the-scenes questioning and looking at ideas and coming up with optional thoughts to make sure that we are addressing all the different aspects. So we make sure that as we go through this process, we have a good, solid understanding of what happens and budget implications as we move forward. The late school opening presentation will be made by the superintendent on May 16th. And another area in the budget, in the transportation area, is I'd like to congratulate Durham School Services. Now Durham is the company we contract with, with our 71-passenger buses. They had competed in a particular competition recognition, and they placed first in North America and were recognized for their dedication in preventing street and work-related accidents. Now there was a number of statistical reports and things that they had to report, but when it all came through, they won that category of the 2011 Safety Challenge. So that really bodes well for the bus company that is transporting our students at the current, at the current. So you should feel really proud of that. Insurance, I think I covered that, and the mayor did in prior meetings, but I think the final number is now dropped below 8.25. And I'm not sure if there is a final number that's coming out, but I, at 8.25 in my presentation, I think we might have scooched a little bit lower.
7.5, yeah.
7.5. Wow. Okay.
Good work.
That completes the narrative portion. You do have as an attachment, it just says contract, it says Clark School. In the description, it says amend the quote "build out" contract language as presented. And what we did was review the language that was initially developed for Clark School. And in one of the sections, when we initially wrote the lease and the contract with them, the change is, we're making changes to the leased space and who would be financially responsible for doing the renovations and the upgrades to the building. So the changes are initially written, will be carried out by school district personnel or by contractors that we hired. The school district will need to approve the changes involving construction. And that language was originally put into the contract because we did not know the capacity or the capabilities of what Clark School could do with that space. And upon meeting with Clark School, it was determined that if Clark School is paying for those improvements and those renovations, that they would be permitted to put in as much money as they wanted. It would not take the time of our staff, our labor, or any of our costs since their money is modifying those rooms. But what we did was we shifted the burden, so it would better, one, protect the district, two, save us time and money, and three, become a little bit more efficient in the handling of that construction process. So if they had particular vendors that had done similar work for them at their prior campus, they're very familiar with what would need to be done to renovate those three classrooms. So as we looked at that, we talked about all the work that will be carried out by them will be approved technically by us to ensure that it meets all of our guidelines for building, construction. But they take the onus of responsibility. They ensure that all their contractors hold the million-dollar liability, the $500,000 of property damage. It relieves us of that responsibility, and our responsibility only becomes an oversight responsibility. The same work was, will be getting done as initially discussed, and they're still going to stay onto the same timelines of June 25th, which they would commence the work and they would complete the work by August 10th. The work is being completed by August 10th because we need a week internally for our staff to finish changing and relocating the final rooms at the lead school, but also clean up the area, make it presentable. The following week, most of the teachers are back into the building. They're moving their personal items in, getting their classrooms ready, and then we're right back into professional development, teacher orientation. So they have a very short window in which to do this. So the onus of responsibility is for them to take their vendors and contractors and compress that into that June 25th to August 10th timeframe. So after, on several meetings and reviewing that, that was in the best interest for the school, the city, and getting this project completed. So that was how the change in the language came about.
All right, so just to clarify, there were two important points that we checked with the inspector general. This is a private school with private funds doing remodeling in a public school building. It was unique, and some questions came up that I was excited to get the answers to. One is that because of the way it's being funded by them, they don't have to follow the procurement, same procurement process that we have to follow. However, they do have to pay the wage laws.
Correct.
So the, I forgot the term for it.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, right, yeah. So those are two important points to make.
And that's how they can expedite this a little bit faster than we could in that process upon the ruling by the inspector general's office. So that's why, working with Joe Cook, in procurement, we changed and modified this language. It doesn't change anything else in the contract, but just the development, the speed, and where the responsibility lies in the materials and supplies to get those rooms renovated. where the responsibility lies in the materials and supplies to get those rooms renovated.
Just to clarify, you said that any plan, any building design has to be approved by us first, is that correct?
Correct.
Us meaning whom?
Central services.
So, anything they do, before they do anything, it has to be approved and is all this in concert with the principal?
Yes. When I say approved, they would be coming in and presenting us with their formal plans. They have an architect that has been looking at the plans to do any of the CAD CAM designs for what they need to modify in that room. But we still, because it's our building, we still have the oversight and the umbrella of what is going to happen in there so we can guide that process.
We're signing off on a plan and then they have to meet those specifications that they're liable for anything that helps?
Correct. And if they do any other damage to our property in, and while they're changing and modifying those spaces, they become responsible for any type of repairs.
Do you know roughly, offhand, what kinds of modifications they're making?
Well, I was at the meeting last week where the Clark School people presented the plan and also the transition plan to the faculty at Leeds School. And they showed the CAD drawings on a PowerPoint. They're taking the rooms and dividing them up and putting soundproofing in, changing the HVAC plan so that obviously if you're taking one room and dividing it to, you want air and heat in both of those rooms. And they have some quiet testing centers, too. It's actually a very beautiful plan. They're doing a high-quality job of remodeling those rooms.
So, everything they're doing is internal, it's about recreating this, I mean, nothing is going.
Oh, yes.
Building out or something like that?
Yeah.
I also went to the Leeds meeting, not the same one that you went to, but when they presented. And I had some concerns about the rooms, the way that they are, and hidden costs for us. With the new floor plan, which I have, what was old and what was new, I understand that they're going to spend $150,000 is what they presented, what OJ presented, to be spending to make the partitions and everything. However, right now, as it currently stands, in room 217, it's music and it's a soundproof room and it was soundproofed by us. But in order to accommodate the move from Clark Street, as explained, that music is now moving to room 210 and there is no, and grade five is moving to 217. And we no longer will have a soundproof room ourselves for our music any longer.
Yeah, the placement of classrooms and the placement of teachers within the school is responsibility of the principal. So, Joseph is making those assignments and I believe that he'll work with the music teacher to find adequate space for her to teach her classes.
Actually, they did. That was part of his presentation, he did. But we're going to lose a soundproof room in the process for our music that we already somewhere along the line had voted to put money into and for a reason. And right now, the DEP is going right next door to the music. And it's going to, I mean, we had already decided it as a school committee some time ago to soundproof rooms for music, for distraction and everything else. Now, in order to accommodate for Clark, we've shifted, I can say the principal, the principal has shifted everything around and the principal has taken away our soundproof room for music. And that, to me, seems like something that in order for us to accommodate them, we are losing. And that when they're building things out, that that should be considered whether, I mean, because they've, essentially, we've been displaced from our soundproof music room. We had something and now it's not there anymore.
That's a good point.
And we should, and we should have it. I mean, when we voted for it to be surplus and looking at this, we've actually had to make quite a few accommodations of moving students, of moving classrooms, not ideally where they'd like to be according to the principal. And the idea of the surplus rooms, we didn't actually have them as much as we had to create them from, according to the map that I was given and explained.
Right. You voted surplus space?
Right.
And so, what you had at Leeds is you have a certain number of people and a certain amount of space.
I understand.
So, the people spread out to fill the space.
I understand. We're losing out of this. We're losing out of this. We're losing because we're losing our soundproof music room, for one thing.
You're correct.
Another thing we're losing is I was under the impression that we leased them out space. I wasn't under the impression, and now I know that somewhere along the lines, we are going to be giving them half of a, part of a public education for free. We're giving them our music, we're giving our music teachers, our phys ed teachers, our arts teachers, essentially our specials. And when it was asked what was, you know, what we received in return, the only thing that they were willing to give, well, two things, was one, diversity, and two, 10,000 books in the library that they no longer want to house or can house at Clark. But as far as any of their technology, any of their many reading specialists, literary specialists, or their vans for transportation, any of those things, they're not going to be sharing with us, not even the teachers. I mean, the teachers will accompany them. They have a four-to-one teacher ratio. And I just think we should be charging them for that. And that might be a different thing, but I think we should be charging private schools' students for any accommodations that we had to make, one being the soundproof room, which is what I'm talking about right now. And two, probably another subject, but I don't think we should be giving them our teachers without financial compensation, especially when we have such, you know, stringent budget restrictions right now that we're all trying to live under and trying to give away, you know, to sell to the people that this is what's the best. And yet, we're giving away some of our services to people who are making money off of it. I mean, it's a private education and they, they're out, we're not, we're not receiving anything that I see.
Well, you're forgetting the amount of money we are receiving, right?
For rent. For rent.
No.
That's face rent.
It's not for rent. The agreement is space and services. And the presentation was made here and it was clear to the school committee that the students, that the students would be integrated into our specials. That was part of the agreement.
But we're not getting paid for it in any way.
Yes, we are. That's, that's the lease.
Through the lease?
Yes. That's the lease agreement.
First of all, we're losing still a music room. Second of all.
Yes, you're correct.
We ended up taking a very bad hit on that, if that's what we did agree to, because our services are very, very valuable, worth a lot more than, I mean, we say our vision is student numbers and classes. Well, in the specials classes, if you have 20 kids in a class, you're now going to have 23 kids in the specials. Or if you have 23, you're going to have 26. So, our kids are suffering as a result of being able to be integrated because we're not getting anything really from that tangible.
No, I feel suffering is too strong of a word.
I don't.
Didn't they also say in that agreement when they were going to specials that their teachers would be accompanying students in those classes?
Yes.
Yeah, they accompany, but they don't teach, they don't anything. They're just accompanying. And they have a four-to-one ratio. They just make so much money that they should pay us for teaching their kids.
That was part of the contract that we all agreed to and that they were going to provide. So, we now have a special with no teacher because our teachers bring the kids to their, the specials classroom and leave. But now there's going to be an extra adult to assist. And we are, it is part of our agreement and there'll be an extra adult to assist. I doubt they're going to just assist their couple of kids in the classroom. They'll be there in a helping capacity. Would be my hope.
And they're going to do workshops in professional development, which are starting in the spring already for the teachers to learn how to work together when they're fully included in the specials.
And the music room?
You're correct. Our music teacher will not have a soundproof music room.
Any longer, so the other kids will be distracted. It's not the music teacher, we're having a soundproof as much as the other students being distracted, which is what I heard that it was originally designed for. Wasn't so that the music teacher could be compensated as much as so that the other students who were being distracted could be compensated.
Right.
I wasn't at the presentation, I just was wondering, are they going to use the soundproofing in that room or?
No, they're going, no, that room, which is currently, the music room, which is soundproof, is going to be one of the grade five rooms. And it's, and.
I was just curious whether.
It's being put way over here and there's a problem with that also because it's a brand-new teacher and they're going to be moving over here. So, there's a lot of different things that we are just really, I think we're just really giving a lot.
I was just curious whether the soundproofing was, if it was installed in the room, can it be installed and moved to? Assuming there are panels that have been installed on a wall, can it be deinstalled?
I think it's more complicated than.
It's more complicated than that because they, the Clark School boasted of spending $150,000 on just that, on soundproofing and then the cubicles, and mostly on the soundproofing of how important it is to be soundproofed. So, no.
Any other comments or questions? Business managers' report.
I think there need.
What do you need that to be voted on?
This modification?
Yes.
Nice if it could be voted on this evening. All you'd be voting on would be the modification and the change and the shift of responsibility and how the work would be getting done. Instead of being done with our staff and our personnel, it would be done through contractors that Clark would negotiate with to have it completed in the same space, in the same area. We incurred, you know, liabilities and everything else to protect us and you're just voting on that change.
Do you have those language changes highlighted? Is this something that's simple enough them to read and understand?
It's just two paragraphs right here and then a signature.
Okay. All right. Would you prefer to have and study it and vote on it next meeting rather than this one?
Does it delay things at all to wait for the next meeting to vote on this?
I don't know if it, if it delays anything. It might only from the point that I know they want to start moving on it, just like anything else. I don't know if this has a delay, whether there were particular questions I can answer, bring back or.
How about if I move that we take a short recess so that we can take a look at it so that we can take a vote on it tonight? Do you just have that one copy?
Yeah, no, I have five copies.
So, we can circulate them.
Could someone, could, could you read it out loud for us all to hear?
Sure. I mean.
If we're going to have a discussion about it.
If you want five, if you want five copies, I can pass them around, you can look at them, read them for yourself.
Yeah, I read better than I hear.
Okay.
So, there's a motion for recess.
I'll take that back if we can just, if we can share them while you're reading it out loud. Is that working?
Well, there's four, okay. There's four. Pass around and then I can read one.
Copies and. There's actually, oh, can I read it?
You certainly can.
Alternative words.
Okay, I'll give you a copy. This is just the two paragraphs. The first paragraph, in section nine, delete, changes to leased space will be the financial responsibility of Clark. Changes will be carried out by school district personnel or by contractors hired by the school district. The school district will need to approve of changes involving construction. It is understood and accepted by the school district that Clark will divide classrooms 113 and 114 into smaller spaces. Now, that is the original language that is in the current lease that is signed right now.
That's been taken out and replaced with.
And it's going to be replaced by, and insert, tenant improvements will be carried out by Clark. Clark will pay for all such improvements. Permits will be obtained by Clark prior to start of construction. Plans and specifications for proposed work shall be approved by Northampton Public School Superintendent and Central Services prior to construction. Such approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. All work shall be carried out in a workmanship-like manner consistent with the existing school construction. Workmanship to be responsibly judged by.
Reasonably.
What did I say? Reasonably. Hang on, look at that. Reasonably judged by the Northampton Building Commissioner. So, it's getting reviewed as they go through this process. All contractors entering the school shall be insured for $1 million liability and $500,000 property damage. All damage to school caused by tenant improvement, construction activities will be the responsibility of Clark. Work will be carried out Monday to Friday during normal Northampton Public School business hours. If evening or weekend work is requested by Clark and agreed by Northampton Public Schools, in addition, and all additional Northampton Public School personnel costs will be paid by Clark. Work will start no earlier than June 25th, 2012, and must be completed by August 10th, 2012.
I will approve of this contract as read.
Second. Okay. So, the language change has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions, Mr. Downey?
I just had a question about the business hours during the summer and what normal staffing was for that building because I don't know whether janitors are available there during the same hours they would be available during the year, whether they might be there fewer hours in which case we'd be staffing the building up in order to have it available for what might be the central office hours.
The.
Recurring additional cost.
Yeah. The evening custodians that are in the evening would move to days. Everybody would be starting at 7:00, going till 3:00 or 3:30.
So, is that current practice, though? I mean, during, during the summer?
Right. That is correct.
So, there'll be no, no change in current?
The only time there might be a change, if there isn't a previously scheduled evening activity. One of the daytime custodians would have been shifted to the night to cover an evening activity. And it would just be a change of shift, not an overtime type of thing. But in this case, everybody goes to the days. We get more done during the day when you move the night custodian or the night custodians to the day shift. So, you have three individuals on at the same time.
Typically during the summer, do you staff, you don't staff at night?
Custodians are, they're cleaning.
They're cranking. That's what they.
Summer works.
Okay, but at night even?
No, it's only 7:00 to 3:30 usually.
What I'm saying, but if you're moving one of those custodians?
That only happens if there's an event like this.
Right.
Then a custodian is put on the night shift.
Right.
Even in the summer.
I just, I thought you said there would be the shift, but I was just not following how the shift would be happening if they were not, in fact. You said, you said there would be the night custodian shifted to the day, but during the summer, there would normally not be any night custodians, so.
That is correct. Normally during the summer, there is no night custodians.
They, they.
They go work day shift. So, which would be 7:30 to 3:30. Everybody would be working that shift.
Everybody works during the day.
Yeah, everybody's, yeah, everybody's on daytime during the summer. So, when contractors are coming in, they'd be coming in in daytime when the custodians are there.
I just want to make sure that not an additional dollar, since we've already.
No, it's not.
They've already agreed to, to extend rate payment for weekends or for outside of business areas. I just want to make sure that no additional dollars will be spent.
That is stated right in the last sentence. So, if they had to stay.
Right. No, I understand, I understand that part. I just want to make sure that there was no additional staffing, for instance. So, on days where we might not, you know, say, oh, there's no activities going on in the building, the custodians have done their work, but if the custodian is already there, then there's no additional cost.
Correct.
Mr. Devall?
You stated if they had to stay, do they have a choice in whether or not they stay if Clark School says, well, we want to work nights and, you know, then we have to provide that with them if that's what they want?
Clark School is going to do everything within their power so all of their contractors come during the day. If they get into the middle of a big project and they have four or five individuals on and they're trying to run some duck work and they need to stay for a couple extra hours, we will have one of our custodians also stay, but they will end up paying for that additional cost of our custodians.
Well, they have notice of the fact that, I mean, you know.
Yeah, it says right here that if they do have to do evening or weekend work, they have to request that.
Correct.
Of me, I'll have to approve it and then we'll approve it and if there's a cost, they'll have to pay the additional cost.
Right.
But the janitor who now is working the 40 hours a week over the summer, the custodian, if Clark wants him to work five extra hours, does he have the right to say no? Or are you going to go above him and say, you have to because?
I believe the custodians have to volunteer for overtime and there's a system within that department for volunteering for overtime.
Okay.
Yeah, Clark is just not going to go directly to the custodian and say, I need you today for five or six hours.
Well, right. I'm just wondering if our custodians still have a choice or if we say, well, they want to stay so tough, you have to stay.
Sure. There's an overtime system that they have.
Somebody will end up wanting.
And usually people kind of fight for overtime, so.
Right.
There will be somebody who would try to grab that shift.
He'll take it, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, so then there's been a motion made and seconded to approve this contract amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. So, you'll be, you probably want these back so they can all.
Yes, and I'll sign at the end. Round at the end for everybody to sign.
Thanks.
Sure.
That completes the business manager's report.
So, if you'd like to transition right into the personnel.
You have a question over here. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question about school choice account, circuit breaker account. I know that we're getting farther along in the budget process and the school choice account and the circuit breaker accounts are places where any unexpended funds are accumulated at the end and they can, they can or cannot be drawn on depending on our accumulated at the end, and they can or cannot be drawn on depending on our decision for expenditures on the budget. And I'm just wondering whether you have a sense of where the school choice account might end up at the end of this fiscal year? I know, I think it was around $140,000, which was a very low amount historically, and I'm just trying to get a sense of that, as well as the circuit breaker account, because I know it's very important to the district in terms of being comfortable that there's enough there if we had out-of-district placements that drew upon.
The easiest one to answer off from your question is the circuit breaker. We did budget $512,000 for this year for funds to be used out of circuit breaker. We will use all 512,000 of those dollars, and we will have various tuitions that circuit breaker will be covering for us, because that's the nature of what circuit breaker is designed to do. So we will maximize all the funds in circuit breaker. In school choice, and I don't have the actual sheet in front of me, but we had a number of positions that the committee had voted to fund directly out of school choice, and we had other items like electricity, we had gas, we had the new, I believe it was the fifth grade teacher that was voted back in the summer, we added to come out of school choice. We will, we budgeted to use approximately $1.6 million out of school choice. We will use all $1.6 million. We will have some monies left over in choice. I don't have the final number in front of me, unfortunately, but I can get that to you. But we will have some monies left over as we move forward into the FY '13 year. We're going to look like we're pretty much on target with the expenditures coming out of school choice. So what we budgeted for, and including that 50, what we budgeted for was a $50,000 position because we didn't have a particular person hired for that fifth grade class, but we're pretty much, give or take $10,000 one way or the other of that $1.6 million, it looks like we're going to be right on target.
I have a similar question, just, most of these accounts on this financial statement to year-to-date are running pretty much where, you know, we expect at this point in the year, you know, sort of at the 70% or 80% spent. Can you tell me, I'm just as curious, why the tuition out collaborative is so low compared to what we budgeted? Is that just because of the way we pay, or is there, I mean, we budgeted at this, it's looking like we budgeted $100,000 too much if we continue at the, you know?
We did, we will use up all of those monies. It's just, some of the items that are in here that are not at either 77% or 82% expensed, some of them are due to timing, some of them are due to the billings in which, the cycles of which some of the vendors do bill us, and also the change in some of our students going to the collaborative or going to any of the other out placements, out-of-district placements. So some of those fluctuate a little bit, but most of it is due to timing and the number of students that move during the year.
I was just struck by the fact that we spent less than half of the tuition out on collaborative.
And these are some of the ones that we're trying to chase to...
It's only a couple of months left.
Yeah.
That's what struck me.
They'll be quite a bit spent out of there.
It depends.
And then, just a question, because they're really smart, but I'm really curious about them, the ones we have overspent, what we budgeted, what are they? What is other instructional and what is attendance?
The attendance, in that particular line, that's where you have your social worker that goes out and visits the parents and to ensure that the students are correctly advised and that we have, I don't want to use the person...
That's our attendance officer that works for both Smith Voc.
Right. Thank you. And we split the cost with Smith Vocational, and the reason that you see it here as being overexpensed is we have not made that adjusting entry with Smith Vocational.
So we're paying for it all right now, but we will get a reimbursement?
Correct. They reimburse us, they will be reimbursing us through a journal entry, and that number will change the next time you see the financials.
What is other instructional?
Let's see, other instructional, where are we here?
It's a really small account, it's only $30,000, but...
440, line 24.
I can't tell you what's exactly in that account. It could be, could be a number of things for $30,000.
I was just curious.
I can't answer that, we can...
Everything else has done such a good job, these two things, so I have a good answer for one, but I don't know...
We can look up the details on that and get it out to you.
I can get you an answer.
I don't need one right away, I was just curious about it, because otherwise, we're really, pretty much, really on track.
Yeah.
Which is very good to see, and I was just curious, why those two have to be off? So I'm glad to hear, one of them has a good reason and the other one, we don't know.
Tell them we'll get for you.
Thank you, and I'll get you an answer to that.
They're small accounts, which is nice.
Any other questions regarding the business manager's report? Okay, do you want to transition to the personnel report?
Certainly. Also, as one of the attachments that went out in the emails that were sent to you is the one-page personnel report, and as you can see, broken out into the same categories you've seen before, new hires, separations, retirements, promotions, and transfers. As you know, we're getting to the end of the year, so there's less change in these sheets, so there's less people that are going to be on the sheets, and it's getting smaller. Hopefully, the one that comes out in May will have less fluctuations.
Okay, so we'll now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'll share with you the highlights from around the district. Ryan Road Elementary School, the students have been actively incorporating outdoor field study exploration into many subject areas. Students have been visiting the nearby vernal pool to gather and observe pond creatures, including wood frog tadpoles, which are being raised in the fourth grade classroom. Fifth grade students have investigated adaptation through a number of different organisms, including the ones they've invented themselves. Second grade classes are collecting and dissecting soil, and these field studies have been motivating students in their reading, their writing, and artwork, as well as science. At Leeds, the science collaboration between Smith College and Leeds will continue in the second round of hands-on experiments. Chemistry students from Smith College will expand the scientific knowledge of students in the primary grades. The kindergartners will be taking a field trip to Smith Vocational School on May 9, and the purpose of that trip is for students to experience a hands-on approach to zoology as they visit the animals. First graders are in the process of constructing habitats in their classrooms, which are part of their science unit on organisms, and the second graders are working with Hitchcock Center Science Guru Ted Watt on their outdoor science projects. These young scientists are studying pond habits in the Mill River, as well as the vernal pools on the Leeds Bike Path, and the fourth graders will soon travel to the Boston Science Museum. In English at Leeds, the teachers are in the process of completing another cycle of professional development with literacy specialist Jenny Bender. The third graders attended the second half of the See, Hear, Feel Film Workshop at Amherst Cinema. The students watched documentaries and worked in teams to write and then perform sequels to the films. The collaborations developed an understanding of the tools that filmmakers use to move their ideas from imagination to the page. In music at Leeds, the second graders are writing original melodic and rhythmic patterns in a project called Our Sound Garden, and they will be playing them on xylophones. The fifth graders are busy rehearsing for their musical, The American Revolution. They'll be acting and singing their way through history. In art at Leeds, it's being integrated into the science units. With the Hitchcock Center grant and Ted Watt, within the art room and in conjunction with Mr. Ted Watt, all classes will be creating art related to the science units that they're doing out in the field, such as drawings of pond life and a mural depicting the changes of the Mill River with the seasons. At JFK, literacy across the curriculum committee has been meeting monthly since the beginning of the year to develop a program that will address the new literacy standards. The committee is comprised of faculty members committed to supporting the literacy. They are Diana Ajan, Will Bangs, John Henry, Michelle Eminatian, Michelle Eastman, and Mike Susi. Also at JFK, they just completed the Wright Flight Program. This was a collaboration between JFK Middle School and Northampton Airport and the Western Massachusetts Wright Flight Organization. This program came to a grand conclusion on Wednesday, April 25, and May 2, when 18 of our eighth graders took to the skies to fly a plane all on their own. And we were lucky enough to be here for an ALTS meeting, and announced it on the loudspeaker, and we all went outside and watched the kids fly over the school. This was made possible with a grant from the NEF, the Northampton Education Foundation, and it was led by Sal Kanada, who wrote the grant and then led the program. The students enrolled in this program and then met the rigors of a 10-week course focused on aviation, history, science, math, and engineering. On their flights, they flew over Northampton, they obviously flew over the Connecticut River, the Quabon Reservoir, UMass Amherst, and JFK, as well as some of their own homes. Upon conclusion of the flight, the students were able to enjoy lunch with the pilot, receive certificates of completion, their own flight books, and wings they can wear proudly on their clothing. Student Miriam Gora captured the feelings of all 18 students when she got out of the plane and simply said, "That was the coolest thing I've ever done in my life." At Jackson School, fertile ground with the Jackson Street School garden committees invite you to attend a school food forum. They should write easier sentences for me to read. All right, the school food forum will offer healthy eating for healthy communities on Thursday, May 31, from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. Workshops are free, and they're designed for elementary school teachers and elementary school parents. There'll be healthy snacks, PDPs offered for the teachers, childcare offered for the families, and Spanish interpretation. For more registration information, please contact Maggie Scharr. Jackson Street's mindfulness practices were featured in an article recently in the Gazette with photographs from reporter Barbara Solo and photographer Kevin Guting. The report included the school's NEF-sponsored mindfulness practice course that 30 staff have taken, and our weekly Monday meditation, as well as our monthly movement meditation. Over at NHS, I won't repeat the things you heard from our student and from Nancy Athas, but I wanted to mention three other items. Seniors Savannah Holden and Emma Martin are the co-leaders and the new founders of the Rotary Interact Club. This is a club that's about community service on an international level, as well as a local level, and internationally, these students are fundraising for a school in Africa. They've created pen-pal relationships with the club members and also with the club members, Rotary Club members in Africa, as well as the students, and they've initiated fundraising to support a new water filtration system to help bring clean water to the African school. Locally, members of the club are teaching fourth grade students at Leeds Elementary School the basis of fundraising and community service, and the NHS advisor is Scott Maher. And I was able to attend the Rotary luncheon where these students were honored. The Rotary was very proud that these students had the initiative and the fortitude to found a program, carry it out, put it into action, and now as these seniors graduate, they have juniors, sophomores, and freshmen who have joined the club and will carry it on in the future. Also, I wanted to highlight that Joel Biewert, senior at NHS, has won two consecutive Western Mass diving championships. He also was recently in the Hampshire Gazette as the Swimming and Diving Player of the Year. He placed second in the Division II State Championships this year, and he will be attending Auburn University in Alabama. Finally, on Tuesday, I was able to attend the Dollars for Scholars Ceremony, where local donors honored 137 of our graduating seniors with cash awards to help support their post-secondary school tuition. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. The next item is an update on the district improvement plan from the superintendent.
So as you all know, we began this work in January with a retreat between the school committee and our administrative leadership team. We created a draft together, and this has since been edited and drafted as we move along in our ALTS meetings, and we also did a SMART goals workshop, where we spent two hours working on developing these goals. It's coming back to you tonight. However, as we put the school committee packets together on Friday, we don't stop working until Thursday. So yesterday, our ALTS team met, and again, we spent a considerable amount of time doing some fine tuning and some changes to some of the language in the plan, which obviously not able to get the edits that fast to you, but tonight, I wanted you to take a look at this, well, hopefully, you've already taken a look at this, and I wanted to open it up to you for thoughts, suggestions, comments, and questions. Again, this will, what I will consider the final draft will come to you in June for your approval.
I thought you were raising her.
I was.
Okay.
The comment I would make is that, boy, this really looks suspicious. It really looks like you've been having some very clear and comprehensive discussions. It was really clear in how specific the goals are and what we're looking to do, and it's very impressive what they're looking to get done next year.
Thank you. We're pretty excited about it. Now, a lot of what we're going to work toward is, of course, budget-dependent, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to make these things work and we'll be able to move forward them within our current budget.
Are there questions or comments about the draft?
It's an extension, another part of that. The ambition is, I think it's really good that the level of specificity as we move downward in the document, from the beginning to the end, because I think previous sorts of plans that I've seen like this sort of tailed off towards the end, and this plan looks like it actually builds towards much more specific, and again, ambitious goals. Something that's very...
I don't know about more specific, but certainly as significant, and if we have that original list and then the top numbers were chosen, so there's a whole list more of things that were considered still important, but less or so, so all of these are significant. Some of them are easier to achieve than others.
Mr. Meyer?
I think the district improvement plan draft looks excellent. The only, the only comment I have is in terms of that vision statement, which I'm always...
And I'm open to changing that vision statement.
Because in general, I like where the vision statement leads you, and that's why the goal, the specific goals, which are really going to be evaluated by the team and by everyone who's connected with the Northampton Public Schools, it's just when I read through the vision statement, it didn't have writerly punch, I would say.
No, it doesn't.
And that's, I understand that when you write by committee and with input, and you're trying to take into account all the different ideas that are on the table, it's very, very difficult, but that was, but just looking at, I would like that vision statement to stand on its own, so that when someone sees it, you know, we can put it up over a door.
Perhaps we wrote it in Latin.
I think that's why so many times people just steal the vision statement from someone else or from some other writer, repurpose it, but it's...
Our mission is great, and our theory of action is fantastic.
Theory of action are definitely going someplace, and I just felt like that one could be polished for a moment.
Mr. Alderman?
Yeah, I agree that, I mean, the vision feels like it was kind of the sum of a bunch of different ideas, more than the others, and I'm not sure about what to embrace our evolving potential means. Is that talking about the students, or...
About the teachers and the learners, all of our evolving potential to succeed with integrity in challenging learning situations.
Did every footnote of each one of the words?
You remember I tossed out to you, I believe it was a month ago or two months ago, that I'm open to suggestions, I received zero.
I didn't want to, like, word smith. That's what we're doing now.
Perhaps we could have the English teacher of the year to look at it.
Maybe she should.
As a daunting assignment.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess my question to you would be, was there anything else that came out of the ALTS meeting that would kind of help us decipher what they were trying to do with the vision?
No. You know, we created that by committee, and it sure looks like it.
Okay.
I just can't think of anything better. I think it's good, it's not great, and I would love to have some input, have somebody take a shot at rewriting it, I would love that, and I welcome it.
Is, did, I should, I should do this, but the vision should almost come out of the other stuff, so I don't know if we're going from a top-down or from a bottom-up approach.
When we did it, we did the vision first, right?
Be more fruitful, I don't know. But I would, I have two quibbles, because if you put a statement in front of me, and I got a pen in my hand, I got a few, I have two quibbles. I would say that the phrase "evolving potential" is actually, you know, you have potential or you don't.
I don't think the potential actually evolves. Also, I think that we succeed with integrity in challenging learning situations. We're asking people to challenge their learning situations, not to succeed in what others might perceive to be a challenging learning situation.
Like, for example, in a room where the band is playing.
Challenging learning.
I'll stop now.
I would recommend that perhaps the chair or the co-chair appoint a subcommittee to write a vision statement, and it sounds like we have some volunteers.
I think a committee of one.
I do thank the alt team, the leadership for doing this work. I think that the plan itself is very impressive.
Thank you.
I really like the way that it's measurable with dates and percentages. I think it really is helpful when you go back and you look at where we were and where we are now, it's measurable. I think it's really important when you're looking at these objectives.
I would ask the superintendent, who will, who and how will we follow up in terms of if we're meeting our deadlines, and how will that get reported out to school committee?
That's a good question. It will be up to you. If you want us to bring this every other month, or every month, or once per semester to give you an update on how we're achieving our objectives, I think that would be very reasonable.
Well, it looks like the first goals are for the start of the school year, so maybe an update at the end of the summer?
Sure.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, I think that sounds reasonable.
Just to kind of review this in kind of a talking point about where we are.
For August or September?
Well, we are having our joint retreat again August 2nd, I believe, so that'll be the time we can maybe establish some dates for reporting out.
Mr. Vauld, you had a question?
Well, I just wanted to agree with the beginning line of evolving potential. I would agree with that. I think it's more to identify and embrace our potential, because, I mean, it's either potential or kinetic.
I, you know, I don't...
So if we identify and embrace our potential instead of evolving our potential.
My ego is not attached to this vision statement. We created it together.
The hard is our kinetic focus, yeah. Right.
Yeah. Let me promise you this, when I bring this back to you in June, you will have a different vision statement.
A full state, a full sentence?
You may not have one that you love, because that's hard to do, but you will have a different one.
Does it have to be one sentence?
It might be a word, if you guys keep it up.
Empowerment, that's my guess.
It's obviously easy for us to sit here and take five shots at this mission statement or the vision, but would it actually be helpful if we, anybody who wanted to submitted?
That was asked, that was asked for a couple of months.
I've been asking for that. I would love it.
But, I mean, honestly, if anybody here has redrafted it, I mean, I'm kind of hesitant to form a committee and try to, because I think we'll just end up with a...
We've done that.
Worse version, that'd be kind of powerful together by everybody's ideas, so maybe we could have some fresh versions of it that we could look at.
A little writer's workshop.
I welcome that.
I'd be, I'd be happy to, I mean, I, it's very, very difficult to do this, and I'd be happy to send something in. Once, once upon a time, I drafted the first draft of a brochure that was to try to attract dynamic and excellent superintendent to Northampton, so.
You're good. That'd be, I think, very appropriate for school committee members to submit a vision.
Okay. Well, so that, that's the update on the district improvement plan. Next will be an update on school choice enrollment.
I believe you have a sheet in your packet, and I think it's very important, possibly even required by law, that I read this out loud, so sorry for reading something you have in your hand, but I need to do that. The school choice lottery took place on May 1st in the superintendent's office. 63 school choice seats have been opened district-wide. Letters announcing the lottery results will be mailed to each applicant, stating if they have received a seat or have been placed on a waiting list. Of those 63 openings, there are some grades that have been wait-listed and some that still have spaces available. Remaining openings may be filled in August. As per school committee policy, the second lottery may be held in mid-August to announce any additional school choice seats which may become available. So the lottery results for next school year, I have to read each grade, in kindergarten, there were five seats made, that were opened up. All seats were filled and a waitlist was established. In grade one, there were nine seats, three spaces are still available at Leeds and Ryan Road only. In grade two, there were six seats, all seats filled, and a waitlist is established. Grade three, there were five seats, all seats are filled, and a waitlist is established. In grade four, there were eight seats, there are two spaces still available at Leeds and Ryan Road only. In grade five, there were zero seats opened, and a waitlist has been established. In grade six, there were five seats, all seats are filled with a waitlist established. Grade seven, there were three seats, all seats are filled with a waitlist established. Grade eight, there were three seats, all seats are filled, and a waitlist established. In grade nine, there were 10 seats opened, all seats are filled, and a waitlist established. In grade 10, there were two seats opened, all seats are filled with a waitlist established. Grade 11, there were four seats, all seats are filled, a waitlist established, and in grade 12, there were three seats, all seats are filled, and a waitlist established. So you can see that we opened 63 spaces in our schools, we have filled nearly all of them, and we are still taking applications. What happens now is that people will decide if they want to accept those seats, and then as people accept them or decide not to accept them, then we go down the waitlist. And occasionally, it can happen that right now, in some areas where the seats are filled and a waitlist, you can actually go through the entire waitlist, and in August, actually have openings, which is why we would have a second lottery in August, because it would be my goal to fill all 63 school choice seats.
Doesn't the chairman need to respond by if they're accepting a seat?
I believe, it's a relatively short window of time. I believe it's a week, but it might be two weeks. Manny, do you know, or Mark, do you know any different?
I can't hear you because of the...
Oh, the question was, how long do the parents have, once they're notified your child's been accepted to the seat, how long do they have to accept or reject that? And I believe it's a, it's a very short time, it's a week.
Very short time, right, very short.
Yeah, people respond quickly, actually.
We've been getting letters back this week a lot.
My other question is, are any of these waitlists very long? Like, what, how big are some of those?
I believe, from my memory from the lottery, which is held in my office, I believe that the longest waitlist was seven, and there were some that were only one or two people on a waiting list, so it's very likely that somebody will not take the seat that's been offered to them, and we will fill that waitlist, or be able to empty the waitlist.
Mr. Warren?
How did you decide how many seats to make available?
Well, the principals have the first input, and they tell us what they think would be reasonable for their class sizes, their class sizes right now. So, for example, if there's a class that has 17 kids in it, they may say, "We can take up to three more to make it 20." What we don't do is if there's, you know, 19 kids in a class, we don't say, "Why don't we take a couple more and bring that class up?" Because we try to protect the integrity of the classroom for our Northampton families, so that if they have a very comfortable class size, we don't try to fill it up with school choice seats. So the principals give us their best estimates first, and then I get to make the final decision.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, and I think that's my next question, which is related to the grade five zero seats with a waitlist. I'm assuming that's because that estimate of how many seats you will make available could change?
Right.
Otherwise, these people are waiting for nothing, unless there's a possibility that you could create a seat.
You're correct. You're correct.
Say no.
By August or something, the estimates change.
And you have your enrollment numbers, so, for example, if you look at Jackson Street and the current class sizes in grade four, 18 and 18, that's something that those obviously will be at grade five next year. So there is a possibility we'll open some seats there, but we want to watch that for a little bit longer.
Later.
Right, because of the changes in their enrollment.
Or they're not waiting for somebody to reject a seat, they're waiting for a potential seat to be created.
Right, so if we decide to open more seats, they would be invited in.
Okay. Is there any discussion about this? Do, do you want to require a motion of some kind to, to accept the results of this lottery? Or you said that you were required by law?
Right, I was required to read this because we're, we have to hold the lottery, and we have witnesses to the lottery.
Excellent.
And so I had to read what our results were, but you don't need to vote on this.
I do have one further follow-up question. A number of years ago, it was realized that the number of school choice seats made available on the elementary schools really had to be in concert with the principal of the middle school, because you couldn't be feeding kids in from four different schools into one without a sense of how that was going to play out in the teams. Is that being done still?
Right, and that is considered, and that's part of the reason why we drew all the line on 5th grade, because there is some understanding in the community that we limit in 6th grade at JFK, so try to get in at 5th grade, and then you'll get promoted up automatically. And so we're very careful about the seats we open in 5th grade because of that very idea.
I just wanted to, as part of the information, is that before 5th grade, I mean, people were trying to get a sense of not how big the 3rd grade was at one particular elementary school, but how big the 3rd grade is across the district, because all those kids have to feed into JFK.
Yeah, and we have just a large number of requests for kindergarten. People obviously want to start with us and stay with us through the whole system, but the requests are so great that, I mean, we could really build another class. That wouldn't be financially advantageous for us to do that, but there are a lot of requests to come to us in kindergarten.
And just to state for new members, in case you don't know this, once we accept a child into school choice, they're ours for 13 years if they want to be here.
They want to be.
If you can't get to 6th grade and say, "We made a mistake, there were too many, we're going to not keep you anymore," we can't do that by law.
Any other questions about the school choice enrollment? Okay, the next item then is an update on the budget development. And Mr. Salsner?
Right, so we have our final decision on the money that we have for next year, and therefore, what we're going to hand out here are the cuts that are a result of our budget for next year. And our next step is to create the line item detail budget book that you'll be getting in June, and it will reflect these changes. It's different every day. It was different from morning to afternoon today, actually. Do you have another one? Or is that it?
Oh, I have one.
Oh, can I have one more?
I'll wait. I have two.
Got it. Thanks. So let me just talk you through this, the cover sheet. So the collective bargaining agreement is what we yet need to fund. We need, due to enrollment, to increase one full-time teacher at Leeds in the 5th grade. We've explained the increase in maintenance landfill costs. It's my recommendation that we put in our budget a $10,000 athletic financial offset, because we often have to cover the deficit, that's our yearly trend. Also, with food service, year to year, we have to offset the cost, so we should put that in the budget and make it legitimate. As Nathan mentioned, when we increase positions, like I have here, a full-time licensed social worker for the alternative learning program, we need to build, strengthen those programs to keep students in our system and to provide the services that they require. Our Ed Jobs Grant is being cut, and so we want to keep the services that we had that Grant paying for, 1.6 FTEs in occupational therapy, we have to move that into our budget. There is an estimated reduction in our district-wide grants revolving accounts of $30,000, and very recently, an increase of 9% in water and sewer that we will, that will increase our expenses there, which means that for next year, our budget increases to $552,000. In order for us to provide a balanced budget, we have factored in the savings from the retirements that we will have, which is merely $1,845. We will be ending the positions of our three literacy intervention coaches, that's two at the four elementaries and one at the middle school, for $145,000. We'll be decreasing our technology equipment budget and also not replacing one of the staff members, we'll say a critical staff member, that those duties will be absorbed within the current staffing structure for $75,000 savings. We will not be offering schools materials and supplies budgets to the schools, this is all six of our schools, and that comes to a mere $30,000. And then, in order to get the additional $308,000, we had to lay off, reduce, change positions the equivalent of 7.0 full-time positions, and how we get to $308,000 is on the second sheet, so this sheet merely explains that one line item. You see the high school reductions, total of $64,000, the middle school reductions, total of $103,000, and the elementary school reductions of $141,000. Not all of these reductions in positions are cuts to the entire job, though some of them are. Some of them are a reduction in contractors. People lose up to 50% of their salary and benefits, some 40%, some 20%, and that is what we need to do to present a balanced budget.
That's a good question.
So I'm comparing just the changes from the last, last week, and I noticed that one of them is an increase in the number of ESPs at the elementary that were used, and I know I've said this before, but I get concerned when we reduce ESPs, because come summertime when we find out who our specialty students are, that's usually the first thing that we're being asked to increase.
Yes, you're correct, and so what we're going to have to do, as a new practice in our school system, is that in the event that a student comes in that requires an extra support person, we're going to have to cut something to provide that for them, because it will be required by law to provide that for the student. So things will be cut or not replaced through attrition as the school year goes on if ESPs need to be increased.
So are ESPs cut right now to the, to the minimum of what we know we need, or is there some way in there?
It's to the bare bones of what we need.
So let me, have you started thinking about what's, what we might have to cut as soon as we find out we have other students coming in who will need more aid?
Well, yes. What happens is that throughout the year, people leave their positions. Some people retire, some people quit, move on to other jobs, and what we will have to do is not replace certain positions. We'll have to do that because we can't just cut somebody's job. So we will have to maintain a balance in our budget by doing that. It's very tricky.
I have a question. Recommended budget decreases of the five FTE retirements of 1,845. I don't understand how it's so low, because it seems to me if we're retiring, then we're retiring the upper end of the teachers, so if we replace them, even if we were to replace them, we would be hiring them in at a much lower salary. And so to go to the second page, where the middle school reduction, which is what James was talking about today, of 1.0, the world language, that's at 60,000, so I'm thinking, okay, there's a teacher. Could you explain to me, please, why it's five, there's only savings of, a reduction of only 1,845?
Yes, not everybody who retires, retires at the top of the scale. All right, some people didn't, don't earn higher degrees and don't move over that way, so replacing them is not that great of a savings to begin with. Some of the people will retire after starting year, so for example, Principal McKenna, she'll be leaving in October, so it's not an entire year savings in the salary. In addition to that, when people retire, they retire with some benefits, so maybe a sick day, a buyout, and it's a cost to the district. It's what Mr. McLaughlin did, is figured out the actual dollars and cents of the person who's leaving, what it's going to cost us, and if we replace them at an average salary, what the difference will be. And so the perception is that you'd save a lot more money than that when people retire, but the reality is you don't. but the reality is you don't.
That's like $300, a little over $300 per retirement person.
Right, so the, you know, the common person would think people retire, a teacher would be making $65,000, we're going to replace them with someone making 40, so bang, there's $25,000 savings. It doesn't work out that easy.
Right, but even with the steps, I mean, so he, Mr. McLaughlin, actually took the teachers that we are losing specifically, or the positions that we're losing specifically, and added that. Is FTE retirements, are those teachers? Are those, I mean, for the five?
Five are teaching positions.
So they're teaching positions.
Teaching and a principal, right.
And a principal. It's just amazing that we save so little to get rid of five positions.
It is true. Now, remember, let me give you a little more detail on that. If somebody retires with a master's on level 13, 13 years of experience, okay? When we hire somebody, it's not that we hire them with a bachelor's degree and zero experience. You know, we looked at a trend of how we hire people, and we often hire people with their masters and two or three years of experience, sometimes up to six years of experience. Because we are an attractive school district for people to work. So they are getting their three, five years' experience somewhere else, getting their master's degree, and then when the job opens up here, they're applying, and they're outstanding candidates. And we want the best candidates. So we hire them. And it's not always at the bottom of the scale.
A couple of the retirements are at the end of next year, so we don't get that benefit. They stay on for the whole year, and they retire with maybe a month left. So you really do not realize any benefit. We still have to get a long-term sub in, or we have to make other accommodations, but you really don't get that savings.
Okay. It just seems so small.
It is.
I agree.
It's not, yeah, it's not eliminating the position of retirement.
So we're refilling all of those five positions?
Of course, yeah.
And that's only saving us 300 and something per position?
No, you could just eliminate those positions. That'd swell in terms of the savings, but then we wouldn't have principals and teachers.
I'd be really busy.
The next line, the next line goes as 145.
I can only do so much in a day.
Yeah.
You eliminated three literacy interventions, and you save 145,000.
Those are the actual positions.
So all of those retirements are getting replaced?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Zahalski.
As a three-year veteran on the budget and property, and having gone over the budget for those three years, I find it so amazing that you can find $30,000 in school materials and supplies to cut. You know, when we looked at those line items and cut them back, we were, we were certain that we were doing with so many, without so many things already, that I really can't believe that we can go to the school materials and supplies once again and find that savings. I trust that you believe we can, but I just find it really shocking because of the work that we've done in the past few years, looking at that and trying to find everything that we thought we could go without and ask PTOs and share through departments in order to find savings there.
Yeah, you're raising a very good point. We really can't. We can't cut $30,000 in materials and supplies because we have taken every dollar out of materials and supplies. And we will continue to lean on PTOs to help support our teachers with classroom materials. But when it's either live without highlighters, markers, and colored paper and scissors, or lay off another teacher, we definitely have to err on the side of preserving our personnel.
And so I would just make one more point on that. I am concerned about the middle school reduction and the world language position. I think, Mr. James speaking this evening, really made some, pointed in true remarks. As a world language teacher myself by trade, I understand the great benefits a student gets out of learning a world language. And coming from a district that doesn't start world language until the ninth grade, you know, I've always really admired Northampton for their commitment to at least keep it intact at the middle school, knowing that at one point, we did have FLESS program that was cut in the, in the elementary schools. So it is concerning to me. You know, we live in a global society. We ask our students to understand and have a worldly view. And one of those things that we as, as citizens of the United States lag behind in is our ability to communicate in other languages. You know, we're really monolingual here in the United States, whereas if you were to travel outside of the country, you'd see students learning three languages is the norm. And we, you know, I think we really need to do the best that we can in our district to get language learning into our students as soon as possible and as much as possible. So that is concerning. So I do share that concern along with my city councilor, who did speak about that last week when we were in our joint session.
Mr. Moore? Yeah, I'd like to make a, as long as we get to talk. I think, you know, one of the things that's really struck me is, you know, we have very good schools. And when you look at the budget, I think we have, you know, when you adjust for that, we have really pretty amazingly good schools. The cost to, I mean, how that happens, the difference between what we pay for and what we get, we have good schools, but when you look at the cost, they're great. That difference is because of our staff and our administrators and our students. And then, you know, our two announcements at the beginning, we're both fundraisers for the schools, that, you know, between the PTOs and the parents who support the athletics through their booster clubs, and the NEF, which is a broader community organization, and on and on. I think, you know, we've, we're really grateful to them, but I think we really have to, we have to really examine how we're doing this. I mean, we're sort of, you know, it's sort of like our sights have been, in a way, sort of, we're acting, we're the sort of the victims of things, and we continue to sort of buy into that in terms of saying, you know, how much worse can it get? How much less money can we get buy on? And we sort of, you know, have started taking that as being like what we pride ourselves on is how well we can do given less and less. And I think at some point, we need to really start asking the questions, you know, which aren't on here anymore, which were, you know, the pages three and four before of the other proposals, which is what do we want to do? And what kinds of schools do we want to have? These schools, they represent us, and we also represent them. And it, we need to start thinking in terms of what kinds of schools do we want to have represent us? And what kind of schools do we want to be representing? You know, when we're talking to other people around the state. And I think we need to start really asking that question. And then that obviously comes down to the dollars and cents, and what will we be willing to pay for it? You know, what kind of school do you want? And how much are you willing to pay for that? And I think we need to really keep that conversation going. I mean, I don't know, you know, the various formats for it, but I think the longest range one is, I think, we as a school district need to really come up with, and I don't know how it's done, I know it has to be done, which is figure out a strategy for actually working with our state and federal government directly. Because otherwise, we just continually do the thing of priding ourselves on doing really well with what, what is an inadequate amount of money. And I think that's not really the right approach. I think the right approach is we have to figure out what we want to do, put a price tag on it and a plan, which is what the pages three and four did before. And then figure out how we're going to talk to the people from when we get the money about it. And I think it has to be something that we do. I think we make it like our summer project or something, as opposed to just waiting till next year and once again looking at these numbers, and once again saying, you know, the problem is, well, we know the problem. So we need to start working on the solution. So that's my, my word for now.
I guess, Ms. Beck.
So specific and more general, and kind of echoing what some of my colleagues have already said, so thank you. But so my two biggest concerns about this, my two most immediate concerns about this budget is, one, what we've done to our ESP account, because just historically, we know we're going to have to replace some of those. And so it almost feels like a false savings, because we just know that there's going to be something else that we're going to have to reduce as soon as we have somebody move into our district. So I'm concerned about that, and that happens every year. And we're not going to have much in the way of reserves to be going to this year. We've had less and less, but we really can't have much of that. And I'm also very concerned about the language program in the sixth grade. So my understanding of how this works is that there will be one less exploratory block in the sixth grade, and so that the ones that they have will last for more weeks. Is that what will happen?
I believe that's the plan.
And so the exploratories in the sixth grade are, would be art and music and is it technology? And what are the, what are the other ones that are being kept?
DE.
DE is the exploratory?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
There's a, you know, it's a, what used to be called home ec?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Family consumer education?
There you go.
And so are we going from five to four? Is that what happens?
And a computer thing.
That technology.
Well, there's also the technology thing, you know, it's like the shop class technology, as opposed to the computer.
Is that sixth grade? I thought that went, I thought that was the seventh.
Anyway.
So, so people get more art, more music, more tech, more computer?
Family and consumer.
Family and consumer science. So I guess one of the questions I would ask is how the decision got made to which exploratory to keep and which not to. So I, you know, I'll put it out there that I would question why we're keeping family and consumer science in the sixth grade over language, which is something that is continued through high school, and I think is so valuable. So I think we still have time to look at these things, which is why.
We do.
So those would be my, my specific concerns. But more generally, I want to say two very different things. One is, I want to commend Jalen, our business manager, for coming up with a budget. I mean, it seems like year after year, we're, you know, you're asked, the superintendent's asked to do this impossible job, and it gets done every year because that's what has to be done. And it kind of looks like magic, like, oh, phew, we did it, we got, we got it done. But as Howard was saying, I don't want anybody to look at this and say, great, we have a great budget. Because the great budget was on page four, and the really good budget was on page three. And this was what we have to make do with. And we're going to make do the best we can with what we have, the way we always do. But when people look at this, they're not looking at the huge list of cuts that we've made in staffing and programming year after year after year. And, you know, this is my 11th budget season, and if I were to come up with a list year after year of everything we've cut in 11 years, nobody would look at this and say, wow, what a great job we've done. Even though logistically, you've done a great job of being able to put this together. But it's a sad, it's a very sad statement about where the priorities for funding in this, in the state and in the country are to me. Because we don't get enough, and as Howard said, I really think that we're not doing a good enough job as a school committee of following through with our statements that we really need to be in touch with our legislators and make, you know, an impactful statement somehow. We say that, but we, we're not really doing it, and I don't think we've figured out how to do it well. And I think that needs more examination. And the conference committee first came together hoping to do that, and every time we delved into a topic just a little bit, it was frustrating, because we kept meeting these roadblocks of where all the, the red tape is in state government, and how little progress, you know, MASC has been able to make on something like charter school funding and all of that. It's just every time we turn around, there's a roadblock of how we can't do as well as we want to for our schools. And then somehow, we end up being penalized if we don't do well enough for our schools. And we are doing well. We have great schools here. My kids have, you know, one went all the way through, and one is almost all the way through, and, you know, I'm not complaining about what my kids have gotten here. And I know with the talent that we have in our district, that if we had increased funds, we would be providing so much more. That's not a critical statement about what we are providing. It's a statement about the evolving potential that we're not, of being allowed to evolve. I do believe that it actually evolves. And we're, you know, we have evolving dreams and visions, even though we haven't been able to articulate it well, but, but we're not allowed to meet them because we can't get the funding that we need. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a very difficult process. Just, you know, when people, this is the time of year when people ask, do you enjoy being on school committee? It's like, not right now, not this month. I love being on school committee, but I find this, this part really disheartening, in spite of the fact that we're doing such good work and putting together a budget that meets what we have for funds.
If I may respond, you described the dilemma very well, and your feelings about the dilemma very well. I want to go back to the first part of your statement about world language, art, music. And if you probably don't remember, you're not as close to this as I am, but one of our early budget plans had art, music, and world language all on the budget slated for cuts. And when the mayor was able to give us $208,000 in additional dollars, which we very much appreciated, we were able to make decisions on what to bring back. And so the principal is involved in helping to create this list, and there's not one thing out here we want to do, trust me. We have some interesting alt meetings lately when this comes up. However, I believe one thing that drives these decisions is the schedule. And how, because we have to have kids in classes engaged in learning. And so how we can schedule our kids also plays a part in how these decisions are made. And if we can, if we cut 1.0 FTE and world language, and the kids can still be in classes and learning, then that's going to have to come above. If we cut all of the art teacher, then there would be a gap in the kids' schedule, and they would have nothing. So those kinds of subtleties in the schedule sort of lead these decisions.
What does it actually mean to cut point four at that school and art? What are we reading here?
Well, what that means is you take a teacher who's here five days a week, and that teacher would be here three days a week.
But what does that do to how much art the kids are getting?
Kids get less art for fewer days. So instead of, and I don't know the details, but just an example would be instead of a student going to art twice a week, they'd be going to art once a week.
So that's throwing the whole exploratory schedule?
Right.
So is that six, seven, eight days?
Which is why the schedule plays into that.
Or is that just in the sixth grade also?
I don't know the answer to that. Sixth grade?
I guess it would.
And unfortunately, when things like that happen, where if a 1.0 person cut down to 60%, we usually lose that person. And so we'll be out searching for a new part-time art teacher. And we don't love for that not to happen, but people need their salaries.
I had a question about the, one of the strategic objectives on the district approval plan is to, school committee superintendent will prioritize funding for technology in the FY13 budget by advocating for an additional $300,000 for staffing and supplies. So I'm wondering if that, how that is affected by this budget, these numbers that you just put in front of us.
You know, I love that you brought that up and that you're a technology director, because our technology director brought that up yesterday in our alt meeting, and it's a very good question. And my response to that is, I'm not finished advocating for our schools. I'm not giving up hope. I'm going to continue to fight for money for our schools. And what I mean by that is if I, you know, I want to take this all the way to the capital planning budget and continue to fight for technology for our schools. And there's got to be some way that we can realize the savings, whether we're going to combine our technology departments with city and school, or if we're going to just put capital expense money towards the schools and technology. I don't know the answer. I don't know how that's going to happen, but I'm not going to stop asking for it and fighting for it.
That's good. Glad to hear that.
We are, I mean, we are planning to do a capital program. We are hoping that we'll have, through turnbacks in FY current budget year and free cash that gets certified later in the year, that we'll have some funding to actually be able to then run a capital program. Take requests from the school department, fire department, police department, and all the various agencies, and then try to figure out what. And I guess if I could also just add, you know, to the point you raised about advocacy, or I forgot who was raising it, that was one of the, in my budget message, that was part of that, just the fact that we are, not just the school, but the city faces this continual kind of structural imbalance, quote it, between our ever-rising fixed costs and the lack of revenues to meet them. We must join voices with other cities and towns to ask our state government to provide us with either the financial resources or the local tools to adequately fund our public schools, our police, our fire, our infrastructure, and all the other v-. schools, our police, our fire, our infrastructure, and all the other vital services in our communities. I'm committed to working with the council, the school committee, city residents and like-minded individuals in other cities and towns across the state on this effort. That's essentially the same issue that you're facing in the school budget, it's the same one we're facing in the city budget. You know, healthcare, when our rates are going up seven and a half percent, when pensions, when debt costs, all those costs are going up and we're only 11 to raise revenue, it's 20%. You know, that's, every year we're going to run into that. So that's important. I'm willing to work with the school committee on it, but, but you're right, you know, I was at a transportation meeting today of regional transportation officials and they were talking about how, you know, the House and the Senate are still, you know, haggling over, you know, transportation funding. They may not get anything or it may just be continued or, I mean, so pretty much across the board and at the state and federal level, there's, you know, this is an issue that's happening, not just in public education, but in all funding areas. It's got to keep, 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 keeping it on people's radars. Are there any other comments or questions about the budget development?
Just not on the budget development process, on what you just, you're saying, right? I think one of the most pathetic things I've heard over the last year is when people talk about how, you know, we, sorry, but we have to cut the funding for public education because of the difficult financial challenges. It's like, that's exactly the reason we need to support public education, precisely because it is the best way to educate our children in terms of, as a cost-effective measure. And it's precisely because of hard economic, economic, as you mean, doing that as an investment and as a way to spend our tax dollars.
And then I guess I would only say, just a final point is that in, in terms of, when I, entire city budget, the, there were the top three increases that I gave to various city departments, you know, over above level funding. The number one was to the North Hampton Public Schools, was the 208,000.
Thank you.
And then number two was our veteran services budget. And then I think number three was either fire overtime or whatever. But anyway, so, I mean, I just, I did want to, though the 208 is not enough to fill the gap, it's the largest increase of any budget in the city. Police department was level funded, the fire department was level funded, the school department was not level funded. So that's all, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
You stated in an amount of money. Is it also proportionately, or we, did we proportionately, percentage-wise, get the most money added to our budget in comparison to the others? I mean, we have the highest budget, so 208,000 is, could be seen as small or large.
Well, the police got zero added to their budget.
Well, I was wondering about the other two, about the other two that you stated. The veterans.
Yeah, I mean, the veterans one is we're increasing it because we're required by law to provide the veterans benefits.
Okay.
So we have to provide those benefits. And so we're increasing it so that we can actually meet the demand that we have each year, provide those benefits.
Is that also because the state cut it? Cut the benefits more?
No, it's because.
We just have to mandate.
It's because we have a lot more veterans.
Okay.
Our country's doing a good job of creating veterans. I wish they'd stop. I love our veterans, but I, you know, so that's one of the issues.
Okay.
And we want to take care of them and provide them the benefits they need. And so I think, and then the other issue, the other one was.
Overtime on the.
Was fire overtime.
Yeah.
And again, we're trying to make that budget actually, every year we underfund that budget and then we have to try to figure out a way to fund it throughout the year.
Kind of like our ESPs?
Like ESPs, like snow and ice, et cetera. And so we're trying to actually put in place a, a realistic budget.
My final comment on budget was that, as you noted, as Ed pointed out, we tried to cut things before we got to the classroom. And once we had to get to the classroom, we went to the non-core academic classes to try to preserve our core academic class sizes. And that was the methodology we used in making these cuts.
Okay. Any other, any other comments on that item? If not, I'll ask for the budget and property subcommittee report.
Budget and property met May 8th, which was just this past Tuesday. We had a few items on the agenda. We heard from the athletic department, Jim Miller came in and we had scheduled that to see how things were going. If you recall, several months ago, we had a lengthy discussion about raising user fees as a way to try to get that budget back under control. It was running a deficit last year and through conversation with Jim Miller on Tuesday, seems as though it's going to be underfunded or come in the red again this year. So we know the superintendent's made a recommendation to put $10,000 into the athletic budget so that we cannot, so we don't have to continue to, at the end of the year, move funds there to cover the budget. Jim Miller has a responsibility in the athletic department to make sure at the end of the year, the, you know, that he has a budget that, that does not operate in the red. Unfortunately, through the user fees that he takes in, the gate receipts that he brings in, and the sports that we provide at the high school, it's just really become impossible for, for him to, to cover all the costs on, on the user fees and the gate receipts. So through the discussion, it was made clear that, that money that the superintendent is asking for in the budget certainly is necessary and it was evident through the conversation with Jim Miller. That was one thing we talked about. Also superintendent shared with us the most recent budget proposal, which wasn't the one you saw tonight because he revised it.
Two days went by.
Two days, 48 hours can make a big difference, as we saw. So we had a little discussion about that. And then lastly, we spoke about the joint meeting that we had with the city council. And we, we discussed a few things and I'll share those with you. One was that the subcommittee agreed that we were all pretty surprised by the suggestion that came out of the meeting, which was for an override. We didn't believe that the intention of the meeting, the joint meeting, was to meet with the city council and, and to ask for an override, but we thought that the, the joint meeting was more about discussing with them how our school services have been eliminated over the last several years and with the superintendent's various budget proposals, what it would cost to bring many of those things back. And so the subcommittee did not take a vote nor did it make any type of recommendation to bring back to the full school committee that we were going to be endorsing an override at this time. I think our immediate concern and the thing to remember is that even if we were to ask the city council to, to, to put an override forward, that's not going to solve our immediate concern right now. We're working with and looking at the FY13 budget and that override does not impact that budget whatsoever. So supporting an override right now isn't going to get us any closer to what we all want, which is really to make sure that this FY13 budget is most, is the most educationally sound budget that we can put forward for next year. That's it.
Are there any questions about the report? Okay.
Dad, we also, when we were talking to Mr. Miller, sort of touched on the, the, the convoluted finances of, of the, of the revolving fund. And I believe that where we left at was that superintendent were very.
I met with.
And work on trying to get that a little more regularized.
So I met with Jim Miller and Nancy Athes to go over the spreadsheets and the fine details of the numbers that were not able to be provided Tuesday night. And we would request to reconvene the subcommittee and give us another chance to present those numbers in more detail. We had a technology glitch in the athletic director's computer. So we have that fixed, we have the reports and the spreadsheets for you and we'd like you to take a look at the details of the finances, if you're willing to do that again.
Sure. So are you, are you looking for a date to convene or?
Andy will.
June 6th or beforehand?
The same meeting that we're meeting with food services is June 7.
Better not to do it at the same time as the lunch.
I think it could be a relatively short meeting. We could do it in 45 minutes, I believe, based on what we thought today. I would like to do it sooner. I felt, you know, I kind of feel like we fell short in providing the information that was necessary for the subcommittee. And so we have that ready and if we could do it sooner, we'll try to, of course, work with your schedules. And I'll ask our school committee clerk to try to arrange that meeting if you're open to doing it before then.
So would we look towards next, as early as next week?
Well, we work around baseball.
Right. I have one game next week.
You tell me when we can meet.
I have, I have Thursday.
We don't need to do this.
Yeah, we can do this off, we can do this outside of the public meeting, yeah.
Not Tuesday, okay.
So the next.
So I would just, before moving on, I apologize, just to, just to one, one more time. So we, we do have one more, we have that scheduled meeting, June 7th. And that would be for the purpose of looking at the food service and bringing in Carol Demoro. Because once again, that's another line item that the superintendent's calling for $25,000. We'd like to hear from her and to, once again, hear from her the, the reason for that increase, the increase in food costs and everything else, so.
She'll be ready with plenty of reports for you.
I believe that we will have, be nearing the final draft of our budget book, which will be presented to the school committee on June 14th. So I'd like to have that ready for June 7th, that you could have a peek at that before it comes to the full committee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the next is a report from Ms. Pick on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee.
So we have continued to meet, the superintendent evaluation process team is comprised of. Alden and Lisa Minnick and myself, whom we made the superintendent. And it was part of his contract that we would have an evaluation tool in place that we all agree to. And you've hopefully read the minutes of our meetings so that you're caught up on some of them, but we have, we've had another meeting since that. What we're passing out now is, is a tool that came from DC and then went through NASS. And just to explain some of it just very briefly, the, the big packet here has, it's broken into standards and then subgroup there and there are indicators and then in the indicators under elements. And so we, as a group, have agreed on 10 different indicators to evaluate this superintendent on in this year. This is the kind of tool that's going to be used across the district for our administrators and teachers. But this is a superintendent rubric. And the ones that we've chosen are highlighted in yellow, so you can see those. And what we will be doing is evaluating, this will be the first time that the Northampton School Committee is doing an evaluation process in public. With the new open meeting law, this is now something that we are bound to do. It was a new law last year, but last year superintendent was leaving, we did not go through this process. This is the first time that we're doing this and we're working very hard to come up with one, a tool that will be a, a good teaching instrument for the superintendent to guide him in making his, in setting his goals for the next year, but also being very cognizant of the fact that this is, we're doing this in a public forum and trying to be very conscientious about how to do that well. It's not something we've done before and we're being in touch with MASC for some guidance and just to remind you that anything that we do as part of the evaluation tool, anything in writing becomes a public document and any discussion that will be held, will be held in public unless it's a complaint or a personnel, a personal personnel item that goes to executive session. Everything about the evaluation process will now be in public and this is a first for us. So we've, together with the superintendent, determined the 10 indicators within the elements, within the standards that we're going to use this year. These can change from year to year or they can remain the same. We'll be using a Likert scale, it's a four-point Likert scale. Unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. The superintendent is, I think, very generous in the way that he's looking at this and that he wants to be evaluated the same way the people in our district are being evaluated. And that includes that any evaluation of an unsatisfactory or an exemplary must be accompanied by a comment. So you can't just kind of check something off and say, you don't want to write a comment? I guess you're putting them in the middle. But if you're going to be.
Efficient, we can just check.
You can just check. But you're certainly going to be encouraged to put as, at school committee, the 10 of us.
Sounds like the incentives are running.
Simmer down.
The most important thing, as far as I'm concerned, the school committee does.
Me too.
So I take this part really seriously and, and for the past several years, I've been the one as the vice chair to compile the summary. And so I, I do take it very seriously and I really appreciate when school committee members take the time to really think about each measurement that they are evaluating on and giving the superintendent as much feedback as possible, whether it's positive or critical, but in a professional way. And to remember that this time, that it's going to be public. In the past, it's only been seen by the vice chair and the superintendent, but now this is public. So this is, this is what we're recommending, is that we will be doing this four-point Likert scale on these 10 items, that you write comments, and that it's being suggested this year that rather than the vice chair alone compiling the data, that this is something that this team would do together to assure everyone that the, the summary is as objective as possible. Comments were, you know, were made in our discussion that the vice chair and the superintendent work more closely together than most school committee members do. And it's very easy for people to think that a summary might be not, more subjective than objective. And so we thought that we would open that up to the, the three members of the, of the evaluation team to do that. In addition, we are looking at ways to include more than just the school committee in the evaluation process. And it was part of our initial contract with the superintendent and it was a very clear public understanding that we would be looking to our administrators for, for feedback as well. And the superintendent has made it very clear that he would like feedback from, from not just the administrative team, but also from the staff and eventually from the larger community. We're trying to figure out, we're still working on the, on how much to open, how quickly, because we just, we want to not go so fast that we don't know what we're doing and getting ourselves into and not so slowly that we don't give him as much information from as many people as possible. We're trying to set a new precedent this year for, for being very open in this process. So we're talking about some sort of a, an online survey tool that we would need to create that would be appropriate for administrators and, and all staff to fill out. And we'll be working with technology to try to figure out how to do that in the most effective way and to come up with questions that will be most suited to the people who are filling that out. And leaving room for, for anonymity where that's wanted, but being able to get some demographics so that we know, are we hearing from a middle school teacher or an elementary custodian? Are we hearing from an administrator? Trying to get some information so that the superintendent understands where the feedback is coming from. In terms of, I wrote notes and I haven't even looked at them. In terms of our timeline, we're hoping to have this tool kind of drafted by our next meeting so that we can hand it out to a school committee member or given to school committee members to fill out. And we're looking to have responses back before the end of the school year, not just school committee, but whatever we're doing, so that we, we get people before they start leaving on summer vacations. And then the, the team will be compiling data and writing a summary during the summer and presenting that in our August meeting is what we're thinking. summary during the summer and presenting that in our August meeting is what we're thinking, so that the superintendent can sit down with us and formulate new goals before the school year starts.
Do we need to, as a committee, adopt this as our, what we're doing for evaluation, or is that, I don't know?
That's up to you as a committee. I believe that you charged us with coming up with a tool, but we're certainly wanting feedback, and I, you know, I know that it's hard to kind of go over this right now, but I guess what I would encourage is for all of you to carefully look at the highlighted items, and I would ask you to get in touch with one of the three of us, me, Alden, or Lisa, before our next meeting, which is, did we come up with a date?
June 6, I believe.
Let me just make sure, so that.
Sounds familiar.
I wonder if I have it with me.
Yes, June 6. With some advance notice, so that if we, if there's something really glaring for you that we're not covering in terms of evaluation measurement, or something that you think that's in there that you really don't understand, that you'd be in touch with us about it, but also remember that all evaluations that you fill out, you have more than ample opportunity to write as many comments on these measurements or anything else that you want the superintendent to know about his work here in terms of setting goals and moving forward.
I was just going to add that, I mean, I think it was challenging for all of us looking through all the possibilities and seeing a lot of these things. I mean, one of them is communication. You look at that and you think, well, of course, the superintendent needs to be able to communicate well, and so by not, by not choosing that, we're not saying we don't think communication is important, but in terms of limiting the list to what we really want to focus on and focus the superintendent on and the district on moving forward, these were the 10 that we're, we're suggesting, so that's kind of how we developed that, I would say.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that I really, this is where my relationship with the superintendent is not so objective, but I really want to commend the superintendent for, one, for embracing this whole public approach and for asking for as much feedback from as many parts of the community as possible, and two, for agreeing to use as many evaluation indicators as we are. We could have chosen less than 10. Remember that for every one that we choose, he has to write a goal for it, because this is what we're doing in the district, where people are writing their own goals that we then will go over with him. We could have said, he could have said, I'm not doing more than a six, but he is, he works hard. He's very motivated to try to, you know, to meet our needs and the needs of the, of the school community and the larger community. He's working as fast as he can, and I just really want to acknowledge that and appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to second that, that I admire the fact that you are undergoing the same, yourself, to the same scrutiny that the teachers are, and that it's in open public form, and that you have not chosen in any way to shirk any of those same evalu, evaluations, and I just, I admire that also, and I want to thank you for setting yourself up to that high standard and for being open about it also, so I second Stephanie's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
So you referenced the fact that often in terms of evaluation, one of the difficulties is having the data to evaluate. In an educator evaluation, before the classroom evaluation, there's a pre-conference where a number of the aspects of the teacher's professional activities are addressed in the conversation with the principal. For instance, what do you do to stay current with the subject matter in your field? What professional development activities have you undertaken? So I'm just wondering, in terms of structuring this, are you considering the superintendent providing us all with evidence of, of his activity in particular areas, or even giving a presentation as part of the evaluation process, so that we basically are sitting down with you on that, with that evaluation and saying, please explain to us, and obviously to the community, what you've done within these areas? And I just think that's more valuable in some respects than us individually trying to gather that data from different sources and then really not evaluating the same thing, whereas if you're having an interview, you know, an interview, a direct interview, we're all hearing the same thing and acting with the same data, and we all have the ability to follow up. I know that's, you know, some, more onerous for the superintendent, it produces a different task, but it might make it more meaningful in terms of our input.
Can I address that? It's my plan, put together a portfolio of artifacts and evidence in each of these indicators, and to make the presentation to the subcommittee and to the full committee, I work in each of these areas, so that you can better assess my work.
I would also say that we've been getting information all throughout the year from the superintendent in terms of his weekly usings and what he shares here in his superintendent's reports about what he's doing in the district and, and, you know, if you, if you look back on those and think back on the amount of communications that we've had, and I think that we're going to be able to answer these questions with, with some thought this year pretty well, and then, you know, ongoing, yes, we hope that those particular goals in his mind as he is giving superintendent reports, making sure that we get that information.
Are there any other comments about the report on the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee? Okay, and the final report evening is from.
If we don't, if the three of us on the committee don't hear from you before our meeting, I'm going to make the assumption that you're comfortable with the, with the indicators that we've chosen. And, and just to reiterate, all of the indicators are important. There isn't a single one that is, we chose the ones that we thought were really important to focus on right now, knowing that we can add or subtract as we need to.
Yeah, in later years, we can.
It's not that we don't hear about the other ones.
Right, right.
I would just say one, I was wondering if I was going to say anything about this, but I think I will, just, just to prolong the evening one more minute, but only because we just had some professional development as, as teachers this past week, we're looking at a similar rubric, if you will, as we start getting ready, ready as teachers to be evaluated with the new system, and we had some discussion around the idea of being proficient, and I heard Mr. Moore say something about, you know, that kind of being the, the quick check, but, you know, after a lengthy discussion, and if you look at the word proficient and what it means, and if I could just read this, proficient synonyms are adept, skilled, and expert, and so when we're looking at that proficient area to maybe evaluate our superintendent as, I don't want us to at all think about that as being average, or that, you know, if it's out of five, that number three. It's really a high mark to say that our superintendent would be proficient, because if a synonym is an expert, we certainly want our superintendent to be an expert, and also, if you, if you look at the definition, right, having an advanced degree of competence in an art vocation, profession, or a branch of learning, and so it is a high mark, and to, to look at the exemplary, we would like to think that every person would touch upon one or some of those, but a proficient mark is something more than just an average mark, and I would expect all of us to, to think of that and see it in that light, too.
Thank you, Ed, and I just want to say that when, when these are printed out for us by our clerk, that you will get this whole rubric, and you won't just get the four words to check off, you will get the definition of what each of those means as it's written here, so it will tell you for each indicator what proficient actually, what it actually means, or what needs improvement, or exemplary, or unsatisfactory, so you're really going to need to read these and take some time with it, and the superintendent deserves us to take that time. This is, in my opinion, the most important thing we do.
I was going to say, I mean, I think that's part of what the state is trying to get at with this, right, is that one person's proficient could be another person's unsatisfactory, so they want, kind of, we're comparing apples and apples, so.
If you remember, for those of you who've done these with us before, our old Likert scale didn't use these words. It had more to do with meets expectations, exceeds expectations, and, you know, well, what are your expectations compared to Andrew's, compared to mine, or to anybody else's? If somebody didn't exceed my expectation, that doesn't, you know, that might be, my expectations were off the wall, and nobody could exceed them. So this is more measurable. This is more, more of a definition and more objective.
Okay. Are we all set then with the particular report? Okay, so then the final report is from a school committee person, Boudie Ball, and it's a report about Day on the Hill.
On March 27, I went to the State House in Boston for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' Day on the Hill. The focus was effective advocacy for education, especially for unmandated, unfunded mandates. Their legislative priorities included adequate and equitable distribution of Chapter 70 school aid, local and regional transportation, charter school finance reform, full funding of education circuit breaker, funding to support education for mobile students, strengthening the children's services safety net through inter-agency collaboration, relief from excessive regulation, accountable virtual schools, and school committee approval for school improvement plans. The, there were speakers both from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, as well as the co-chair and the, the Joint Committee on Education, and the vice chair and the House Ways and Means Committee representative, Marty Walts. They stated that we're, the regular education is underfunded by $1.6 billion here in Massachusetts, and that we need to find ways, as a school committee, to become leaders and become powerful local representatives for effective lobbying, and that was a lot of what they had to say, was that, I brought a couple of extra copies. I brought one for Superintendent Salzer and one for the chair, co-chair, assistant chair, and then I have one for anybody.
David, Mayor, you can have one if you want.
Okay, and also, as well as that, I passed out the Massachusetts 2012 State Legislative Directory. They suggested lobbying letters and phone calls to our legislators, but also to not overdo our lobbying and to develop relationships with our legislators, and the legislators themselves stated that a lot of the reason that some, more of the money was directed to more affluent school systems than they had previously anticipated was a direct result of lobbying, and that we, as individual communities, all need to find ways to lobby for ourselves. Primarily, how do we set the most appropriate guidelines to get kids to graduate and be well-educated? And that was the bottom line, and that's what we're trying to do here within our district, but they did suggest that we do need to really get together an organized effort of lobbying and to take it to our wards and to our counselors, and have the counselors take it, and have it be citywide, and the legislators themselves, who had a great, we had a great lunch by the technical schools, all the different technical schools in the state, so we had a variety of lunch, and the legislators came, and a lot of them came and ate with us and talked with us, and, and said that, you know, they really enjoy, want, need to hear from people, and I would kind of equate that to being on the school committee here and really appreciating and wanting people to contact us and let us know what it is that they want. I think that we need to do that in a more organized way. And the other thing is that the idea of virtual schools, and they suggested that all the different districts look at the idea of virtual schools and see if we could have any online classes, and that would help take away the crowding of the school rooms and all sorts of different things, but also be able to get kids to possibly take college-level courses in high school online. So that was another thing. And then there's a safety, a school safety, an anti-bullying conference that is in Orlando, Florida, so if anybody wants to send anybody, I volunteer. Any questions?
I mean, did they have any, did they have any, I think as you indicated, it'd be great for, for Northampton to focus on this stuff, but it seems like to really have an effect, they've got to hear from a bunch of different towns. Do you think that's true, or no? I mean, because what are you really talking about? It's kind of changing the overall formula, it's not just kind of coming more money to Northampton, right?
Sort of. Basically, what each one of them said was that the greasy, squeaky wheel gets the grease, and that it's not, it's not all or nothing, that if you have a community and you lobby to pick out what is important and lobby for it. Right now, they're just not funding, they have mandates, but they're not funding the mandates, so possibly to try to get them to fund the different mandates that they're stating, like the evaluations and the administrative costs that go along with those. They're interested in hearing from all the different communities. In fact, a couple of the legislators that weren't even from my, I didn't even meet our legislators, I didn't see them anywhere there, but that didn't really bother me that much, because I would rather meet them here and meet other legislators, and they said that, yes, write to your own legislators, but if you really believe in something and it's going to be an effective, you know, lobbying tool, write to other legislators, too, that just aren't your own, and that's why I passed out this long list of, you know, everybody that we could write to, but basically, we need to find effective lobbying efforts, and they do believe that that matters and that it works.
Okay. Are there any questions, additional comments?
I just, I mean, I was wondering, so what do you think's like would be a good game plan for, have you thought that through?
No, I haven't thought that through, but I've always thought that we need to get a committee or something that's based with citizens and people who are active, to be able to state our goals and what our, our utmost goal, to, to be lobbied, so that we're not all over the board with the lobbying.
Yeah, we'd probably pick like one or two key things.
That's what they, yeah, that's exactly it.
Because it seems like, I mean, it's the kind of thing that could just kind of, sounds great, because you kind of just disappear into the.
It says, research, research your legislators' backgrounds, committee assignments, and voting records on their issues, develop relationships with them by making advocacy a year-round commitment. Don't overdo the lobbying, only write when you have something important to say, and then write to everybody. Invite your legislators to visit our schools, and plan a tour of one of our more successful schools, that's all of them, to show successful programs in action. We need to lobby with real-life experience as far as how it affects each of us, set priorities, and they said when everything's important, nothing is important. And then we do get our allies from within our community, and use the media, and of course, always be polite and courteous in politics. There are no permanent friends and no permanent enemies, and pat your legislators on the back for what they do well, as we get them to work for us, for what we need.
I just want to thank you for representing the school committee at this conference and providing a report back to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Are there any other old business items that we, I don't see any on our agenda, any new business items?
Are we meeting later this month, or is that meeting canceled?
I'm 100% clear about.
The full committee meeting?
The May 24th.
It's looking like we may not need that, but I would save the date.
24th.
So we'll hear if it's.
Okay. Okay, any other items? Our future business and meeting dates, rules and policy, meets on Tuesday, May 14.
Excuse me? Tuesday is not, Tuesday is the 15th, so it's, and, so I'm not real sure. Tuesday is the 15th now.
That meeting was in the process of being rescheduled.
Right, it was moved from Monday, the 14th till Tuesday, maybe.
Okay, so I guess Tuesday, May 15, late school start for Jackson Street School is Thursday, May 16.
Thursday is not the 16th.
Wednesday is 16.
It's Wednesday, the 16th.
Yeah, Thursday's the 17th.
I believe it's Wednesday, the 16th, yeah.
It's around then.
But the next one is Thursday, the 24th.
We will take care of these errors.
I'm just reading, as I see them here.
Yeah.
A school committee meeting is Thursday, May 24th?
That's tentative, that one.
Okay, this one I know I can't get wrong. Budget and property to be determined.
We have one scheduled for June 7.
Another one sooner, Mike.
We're going to have another one sooner, it's fine.
Okay, so that completes the future business and meeting dates.
Second.
Your turn has been made in seconded. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.